Just waiting for, I believe, one more colleague so we can get a quorum here.
I'd like to call this meeting to orders, our joint meeting for the Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, September 22nd. If we can get a roll call, please, or excuse me, a roll call.
Arenas? I called her just as she takes a drink. So she's here. Cohen? Davis?
Here.
Peralas?
Here.
And Jones will be late.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, our chair will be a little late. I will turn it over to him once he arrives. So we'll move on to our first agenda item. It's reviewing the September 28th final agenda. If we can open that up. Thank you. We'll start with pages four and five.
We are recommending the evening session be canceled. There are no evening items.
Okay, thank you. And six and seven and eight and nine and 10 and 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 and I think that's it. No?
No, I said, oh, I accidentally closed the ad sheet instead of
Oh, sorry.
Instead of clicking on it. We do have an ad sheet. It's to add 8361 resolution. I'll pull it up in just a second.
Okay. Yeah, if you can pull up the
Yeah.
Ad sheet.
There we go.
Okay. Thank you. And now we'll go to our members of the public. And as a reminder, we are speaking on the review of the September 28th, excuse me, September 28th, 2021 final agenda item. And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function with us here or press star nine. If you're joining us by the phone, you will have two minutes. And we'll go over first to Paul Soto.
Paul, you briefly unmuted and then you remuted.
Okay, sorry. Yes, thank you. Paul Soto from the horseshoe. First of all, I'd like to extend my gratitude to Councilwoman Arenas for her advocacy yesterday. My ancestors never had an opportunity to have someone like you to speak on their behalf. And so on their behalf and myself, I want to say thank you again. Secondly, I would like to refer to the amounts of money that are going out and the land resuming issues on the consent calendars. I think that this needs to be at least, you know, like somebody has to kind of review that and see if there's any possibility that they can be brought to the to the regular agenda items. Secondly, the the crane height limit issues is that we had a discussion about this a few months back, both Blair and I with Councilman Peralas. And Councilman Peralas agreed specifically to that if those cranes are up beyond a specific date, that we have to decentivize the developers from doing that. And he agreed on record for that, but I just don't see it reflected here. And so I would like to ask if that specific topic can be revisited and that the that the fines for keeping those cranes up beyond a certain date is is exorbitant. Thirdly, the eviction moratorium, this, there has been no talk, absolutely no, even, you know, no dialogue with respect to this. I think that what it is that the entire city, well, no, no, I won't say the entire city, specific populations in the city that are probably the most vulnerable absolutely need the most advocacy and the lack of advocacy from the city as a whole, I think is irresponsible. And I think it's not really fulfilling the mandates that you swore to when you became a politician to begin with. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Next speaker will be Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. Happy Wednesday. Happy heading towards the end of the month. And to speak to the to the September 28th agenda, item 3.5 is about adoption of a resolution of a resolution apologizing to Chinese immigrants and their descendants. To quickly offer, there was mentioned yesterday that there is some work going on on the future of the of a COVID-19 task force, possibly an economic task force, it's called. ACI was supposed to help contribute to that process. And it was questioned what exactly their role will be. I hope just to mention their name at this time can help along good practices. It sounds like a good program to prepare ourselves for this next year and the next few years. Thank you for it. To consider the item of eviction moratorium and to comment on Paul's words. First of all, first of all, I remember we having that conversation Paul mentioned about the cranes back in January. It was at a public meeting. I think rules and open government. So thanks for that memory. I hope we can continue what Paul was asking for. About the eviction moratorium stuff, it's also on your next week's agenda, October 5th. These things should have been planned in the month of September because, you know, if you do these things in the beginning of October, people are going to be panicked and rushed after the September 30th date. Why did you choose to work that way? I mean, you put us under stress where we could be planning and talking and what Paul was saying, just an openness, you know, there can be ways to talk about the eviction moratorium after September 30th. There can be allowances, but we have to talk about these things openly and make things clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Tessa Woodman.
Okay. Good. You got it. I got it. You know, first of all, the first time I went to rules to figure out, you know, that we have to do all this studying because you do not read the agenda. I think you really should read the agenda out loud. And on top of it, there wasn't anything, the agenda wasn't there until like an hour ago, not even an hour ago, like, well, I checked back like, you know, 15 minutes ago. I mean, that's wrong. I know that's wrong. You know, it shouldn't be that way. If this is rules and open government for the whole. And I and I checked three times and the agenda is not there. And then it's just there like five minutes before. That's ridiculous. And so that's a problem, but I won't hear anything from you. I'll keep having to write the manager to get this straightened out because I don't appreciate that. And so in terms of general issues about housing, you know, what I'm saying is that, well, I am actually talking to the people who are protesting what happened to them in their neighborhood at Vista Montana. And the issue at the root is a lot of our public comments is about that they were not notified. And it's the same issue that I'm having in my neighborhood. We were not notified that there was a general plan change. Nobody sent us an something in the mail saying, how do you feel about having a five story hotel in your neighborhood? You didn't do that. And so this is part, this is now becoming a trend is what I'm seeing and it needs to stop. And we need to, we need to, you know, just make it right. It has to stop. That we need to undo whatever you're doing. And that's why I don't want a hotel and it needs to stop. And they don't want the homeless in their neighborhood until we redo it and get public input. That's how it needs to go forward. And then the other thing is about housing. And Matt Mayhan is saying, we're going to do this whole thing with housing. That's very good. Well, my
That's not on the September 28th agenda.
Yeah, I know. I'm talking about housing. And the issue with housing is that we need to have, they need to be 24/7.
Thank you. Next up will be Kirk Parten.
Yeah. Hi, thanks. Thanks so much. My only question, I didn't see the little recording light started on this. And I wasn't sure if that means it was to be recorded another way. That's my only comment on this, on this. I appreciate you letting me speak.
I'll ask staff, are we currently recording?
Yes. Yeah. Council committees and city council meetings are recorded through the CREAT TV team, not through just plain Zoom recording. Plain Zoom recording is done for like words and commission meetings.
Okay. So that's why people are not seeing the record light.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next speaker will be Bill Dowling. And just as a reminder, Bill, we are currently speaking on the final agenda for September 28th.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the time. And if I understand correctly, the subject of utilizing the Santa Clara County Fairgrounds to provide further shelter for the unhoused as part of that agenda?
No, not at the moment.
Okay.
There is a, there is a an agenda item later today that will will discuss that.
Hold my comments till then. Thanks.
I'm sorry. I'll, I believe that is item G3. Yeah. Yes. Okay. Next speaker is caller with the last four digits ending in 6910.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just wanted to address the eviction moratorium. And I would like to ask how the eviction moratorium does not apply to the residents who are living in Shirtsay who are being evicted and maybe just something to consider. And also the creative use of a brand new term. You know, and you know exactly what I'm talking about, Councilmember Peralas. I also wanted to mention that a previous caller had mentioned Vista, Montana. It's not that the people don't want them there because they weren't notified. They don't want them there because they're classist and assume that everyone is a pedophile. So I just want to correct that. But the eviction moratorium should have, Blair was right, the eviction moratorium should have been considered long ago so that people weren't getting down to the wire and completely and totally freaked out that, oh, my God, what am I going to do? And fleeing their homes. When we're out there working in the camps, we've seen the camps grow larger and larger and larger. And it's because people were being unlawfully evicted. And it's just going to explode. And it was this goes, if this is a loss. And I just don't feel like that's been taken seriously. And it's just, why do we always wait until the last minute to do things? Much like the plans that we're going to talk about later that are just so, so after the fact. That's it.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I was on mute. I don't see any other attendees with their hands up. Oh, I do see now one. Our last public commenter will be Gil Osmer. And Gil, just as a reminder, we're speaking on the review of the September 28th final agenda.
Yes, Councilmember. Thank you. I'm sorry. Listen, I'm kind of confused on 3.6 of the agenda for the 28th. You're talking about this fencing and spring and Ashbury and around that area. We know they're going to be fencing. But I've been told that the RVs can park on Ashbury Street. And during this whole horrendous abatement that you all are doing, that's what I've been told. So maybe we better get it, you know, figured out. Are we going to close Ashbury? And if that's going to happen, when? So I was kind of confused about this whole item because people are parking there. I've been told I can tell them from city. So I'm kind of confused on it all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that'll bring us back to my colleagues on the committee. First up will be Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you, Vice Chair. What I was going to suggest is if we could have maybe a time certain for a couple of the items. And I just clicked off of the item. I think it's item 17. It has to do with tobacco flavors and banning. The ban that that has gotten a lot of feedback, I think, as you probably have seen in your inboxes, there's a lot of folks who are advocating. So I'm going to guess that there's going to be a significant number of speakers and I would like to see a time certain on that.
Those are items 7.1 and 7.2, which are, I'll ask, are those being heard together? Or no?
They aren't being heard together. They're two separate presentations, but it does make sense to hear them in that sequence, however. So if the committee does agree, I would recommend doing time certain for both of them.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, and those are the two items you were referring to, correct, Councilmember Arenas?
Yes, those are the two items. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, including the ad slip. And then I'm open to what the Rules Committee thinks about the timeframe for 7.1.
I'm looking at the rest of the agenda here. Trying to get a time that might, you know, that might work. Is there going to be a verbal report from the city manager COVID update on that, correct?
There will be. It'll be about 15 slides. And I don't think it'll be one of the longer ones, but we do plan on giving a COVID update.
Okay. And then we have the deferral of our code report back on that audit. And then the fencing project might generate some commentary too, just trying to determine if we should be looking at like a 6:00 PM or sooner. And then we do have a couple other items after that. The other one that I think might generate some commentary is the eviction moratorium as well. The other one that I think might generate some commentary is the eviction moratorium, um, as well. And then the evening session is canceled. Uh, so, um, you know, I, I think generally we've, we've picked around six o'clock on these items for time certens when we've thought that, you know, we're going to get a lot of, of public commentary. I think that, you know, that would be fine, uh, as far as based on what I'm looking at an agenda. Happy to, uh, you know, hear other thoughts though, from, from our colleagues. Councilmember Adennis, would that be fine with you for the time certain?
That works great. Yeah. I'll include that in the motion for six PM.
And I see our chair is back. Um, we don't have a second, so, uh, okay, Councilmember Davis will second, and I'm going to hand it back over to you, Chair.
I was going to ask you to, to close it out, but, uh, I'll take it. And I'm sure that, uh, you did another outstanding job filling in. So, thank you.
Chair, I, I apologize. I'm completely out of order. But, um, just going back to this one particular item, um, that we were talking about. From what I have, um, recognized on the emails, there's a lot of, um, and from past, um, committee meetings, especially from NSC, we have a lot of young folks who come in. And so I wonder if maybe, um, I don't know if it would be better to do it just a tad bit earlier so that, um, you know, that, that we don't compete with homework time. I wouldn't want us, uh, lots of parents getting upset with us. So I wonder if maybe, uh, if we could have something, I don't know, something around three or three thirty. And that way we can, um, hear those younger voices. And I don't know if the committee is okay with that.
Uh, I'm, I'm fine with it, uh, Councilmember. I, I, I don't know what the right answer is for these times.
I know. I know. But the most of the ti- a lot of the times we don't accommodate our younger folks. We think about parents who are working and then, um, you know, after work, uh, that kind of thing. Um, I'm just throwing it out there. From what I've seen in the past.
Yeah. The trade-off is, you know, we accommodate, you know, the students before, you know, dinner, the dinner hour before they start doing their homework. And then we could potentially inconvenience, uh, the parents who are working and who also want to attend. So maybe, maybe a sweeter spot might be five. Do you think?
I love it. That, that's, that's always expected from you, Vice Mayor, is to find the middle ground. I love it. Five o'clock is perfect.
All right. So you're modifying your motion to, uh, say five?
Yes, sir. Modifying my motion to reflect five PM.
Okay. And is that okay with the secondary?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Tony? Uh, well, I'm sorry, Rollo. I see you have your hand up again.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think you landed on a good spot. I, I was just going to mention as well, it's, I think we always struggle on this because we never know what the right time is to get the most participation. I'm thinking of my nephew who's in high school and he, he's practicing football after, after class. So, you know, three thirty to five or whatever, or something like that. And, you know, he's not accessible. So it's just so hard, right, to try and, and find a spot that's going to be, uh, accommodating of the most participants. Uh, I think five is, is a good time and I think we can be flexible on our, our dinner break rather than a five thirty, like a six. And we've done that in the past, right? We've kind of played it by ear as, as the meeting has, has gone forward. Uh, so I'm good. Uh, thanks.
Okay, thanks. There, there's no other hands raised. Uh, Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen? That's right. He's absent. I'll stop calling him. Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto the agenda for October fifth. And we're going to start out on pages four and five. Six. And seven. Eight. And nine. Ten. And eleven. Twelve. And thirteen. And fourteen. So I am going to go to the public for public comments. And first public speaker on this particular agenda is Tessa. Go ahead, Tessa.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, the issue of the housing, um, that Matt Mayhan is looking at or whoever's looking at all the housing issues that we're dealing with in our housing, uh, crisis. And the only thing I've come up with is, in my understanding of the housing crisis, is that there's a model that the Christian community has been using where they, um, have four adults, and I'll just call them teachers, are living with four homeless people. And what I like about that, and, and I guess it's been successful, that's how they're, that's the model they're using. And I think the benefit of that is the, you know, that, you know, a lone monkey is a dead monkey. And just having the constant connection with another human being, I think, is very critical. And what happens to, uh, homeless people is they get very broken from all the time that they spend alone. So that's part of the problem. And so what I've been thinking about is, actually, I want, in one, you know, one issue that we could have is to buy the property at six one five Stockton Avenue. It's proposed to be a hotel. To do a homeless program like this, where there'd be like three houses, where there'd be eight people living in each home. And then in the center would be a garden where they'd be growing food. And, and on top of that, nature heals. So that's a very important part of healing, is providing nature for people. And then on top of it, they're also going to be learning to be more self-sufficient and, um, learning to live without fossil fuels. Cause then that would be the program that they would be implementing. It would be a, a demonstration project of how we all need to live and to learn to live without fossil fuels and to also to learn to live without waste. And in terms of no plastic, those, that would be the curriculum. And that's part of, you know, living, uh, sustainably on our earth. So that was my.
Thank you. Blair?
Hi, thank you. Uh, Tessa and I have talked about, uh, her ideas of, of shared housing with people who are maybe, uh, more a regular part of society, uh, and place them with people who are not. I think it's a really interesting idea and that it should always have a garden wherever they build this housing. I'm really catching on to, uh, Tessa's ideas of gardening and the importance of what gardening, uh, can teach ourselves, uh, for our future. And so, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I hope to continue to talk about these things as Tessa will. To talk about the affordable housing, uh, items and eviction rental assistance, uh, things one more time. You know, it is my understanding that, um, if, if you're, if you're after the September thirtieth, uh, moratorium date that you've warned us about and that, uh, a tenant can still try to apply for, uh, state funding, subsidy help, even if an owner sues them for eviction and can be protected, uh, until March two thousand twenty-two. That's the county, uh, ways to work. And, uh, that's the county eviction moratorium deadline. After that, then a person may be vulnerable after September thirtieth, uh, after, you know, to be, to be sued. An owner, an owner can continue proceedings. But I wish you could have explained all this more, uh, during this month of September. And, uh, we can talk about this more in the future. Uh, good luck with affordable housing ideas and, and all your, uh, and ELI, BLI, mixed income. How much? I love that so much, uh, for these issues of the past two, uh, agendas. And to conclude, uh, about consent calendar items around community energy. You've done some great work at the state level. Really be careful what you're doing with yourselves at the local level. And let's really practice renewable energy ideas that can help lead us out of any difficult natural disaster situations better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Uh, yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I, I just, I, I, I can't help but talk about, there's upwards of eighty million dollars going through the consent calendar. In just these two calendars, the last one and this one. Eighty million. That, that is, that is just, I'm, I'm just going to leave that there. I'm just going to leave that one there. Um, secondly, uh, DevCon, there's no bid for that housing that's going, uh, which is, I tried extremely interesting. This is going to be a very interesting sociological experiment of having that housing in proximity to the police department. That is going to be interesting. Um, but my concern is there is no bid. And we're talking in excess of eight million dollars to DevCon, just here, automatically yours, don't even trip. So my question is, how much influence did DevCon have? And, or how much influence did the department have? Or how much influence was from one side or the other in ensuring that the location was there by the police department in order to facilitate the no-bid contract with DevCon? I think that's a fundamental question that, that, uh, as a, as a citizen in the community. And considering that the, uh, that the council has a fiduciary responsibility as well as a, a civic responsibility to the community, that the fiduciary responsibility was, I don't know, maybe it wasn't maybe looked at as very, you know, as closely as it could have been or, but there is, like I said, excess of eighty million and no bids with DevCon. And there's a, there's, there's almost like a, like a knowledge that you know what's going to happen on the thirtieth in terms of what the council's, uh, going to do and what it actually failed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, person with the number ending in seven, three, two, seven. Go ahead. Let's, um, let's go to the next speaker and, uh, maybe we can put the, that person back in the queue. Sean? Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilmember and members of the Rules Committee. Sean Kelly-Rye, I apologize. I just joined a little bit late. Um, I wanted to talk briefly about item seven point two on the draft agenda for, uh, the twenty-eighth of September. And it has to do with smoke-free housing. Um, we've been.
Sorry, but you actually, um, we already approved that agenda.
Okay. And I speak later to that at the end of this meeting?
Um, well, actually, um, you're really not supposed to speak to any items that are on the agenda. But, um, you could speak, uh, on, uh, other topics, but not specifically that topic.
Okay, then I'll cede my time. I'll just speak at the council hearing.
There you go. Thanks, Sean. All right. Our neighborhood is important.
Hi, I'm calling about the, uh, I'm talking about the fairgrounds, that it's a county-owned property to be used for the benefit of all in the county, children, teens, seniors, and should not be used for one specific population only, which is the unhoused. District seven is an area that's already overcrowded and it lacks in parks and open space for its current residents. It also has an elementary school adjacent.
Sorry for interrupting for a second. So are you, um, speaking to Councilmember Manza?
Yes.
That's coming up, up later in the agenda. So you'll have an opportunity to speak to it directly.
Okay. About what time?
Um, it's hard to estimate, but maybe twenty minutes, fifteen?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Todd?
Yes, I want to speak on, uh, Councilman's, Mayhan's also, uh, issue also in about twenty minutes.
Okay. And probably it, it might be shorter than that. I'm terrible at, at estimating. So just take that with a grain of salt.
Thank you.
All right. Um, the person with the number ending in seventy-three, twenty-seven. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was, uh, wanting to speak on Councilmember Mayhan's proposal as well.
Okay. Um, you will have an opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, bringing it back to the committee. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All right. There's motions and a second. Tony?
Arenas? Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi. Okay. Next up on the agenda is, um, upcoming special meeting agenda. Uh, review the September thirty, uh, twenty twenty-one pension obligation, respective roles and responsibilities for policy, policy development, study session agenda. I will go to the public first. And I see Paul has his hand raised. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I'd like to, if like a very specific, with regard to this item, that a very specific table be laid out for the public to know what is in the pension fund? What are the city's obligations? And where is that point when that money's going to run out? Be- because it will. It's going to, it's, what it's going to do is it's going to start borrowing against interest. And what that's going to do is it's going to, it's going to compound it because it's borrowing against money that doesn't even exist. And so this is, this is critical because you're going to have city employees exercising power. Just, just the city employees. And they're going to be exercising power against the citizens themselves because they have a direct stake in the, in the outcomes of these pensions. You know, me, it just, uh, you know, I'm not a financial officer, but I think it's real easy to assume that the pension obligations to the city is going to far exceed the amounts of money that is in the fund. That's just a very basic way of, of measuring what it is that we're faced with right now. Or we're going to run out very soon. So what I'd like to know is that, number one, the city, the city services and the city employees, it's going to have to expand because of the four hundred thousand people that you guys already planned that is going to come here. So that means it's going to have to, 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 uh, it's going, yeah, it's going to have to expand. So with that said, what kind of preparations is being made for that? Is there any, uh, is, has anybody been able to extrapolate information from current information as to how many city employees we're going to have to expand for that time? And I would also like an assessment of how many employees that the police department believes that it's going to need in order to accommodate those four hundred thousand people.
Thank you. Blair?
I don't think this item may be quite connected, but just a simple reminder, a, a thank you that I think, uh, many sides within, uh, San Jose community, government and community are working towards the idea of, uh, police overtime issues and how we can, uh, better adjust that for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last public speaker. Bringing it back to the committee. Can I get a motion, please?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, onto the public record. And we will go to the public. And, uh, go ahead, Blair.
Hi, thank you. Um, there are a lot of people, uh, you know, a lot of letters in the public record this week. It was nice to see. Um, you know, I, I feel, uh, councilperson, um, uh, Cohen, you know, he's new and, and he made an incredible decision yesterday about the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the Kurtner Monterey Highway issue of not just thinking about surveillance cameras needed, but how, how can we consider, uh, barriers and, and, and narrowing, uh, the large Monterey Highway as it is? I thought that was really incredible thinking from him, that he is, he does, he is thinking about things. And he, and it's nice that he does that. I think with this item. I think with this item, he had a really good initial idea, along with Apple, along with the Housing Department. They, they figured out some really important good steps, but didn't know the, a final step of talking more openly with, with community persons. You know, good luck how you have to continue with this issue. Is it a sense that, you know, you've done some things really well with this item? But, but can we, maybe we work on a notification process in the future, how that can be better developed? And it can be placed in that area to say, this will be coming soon, you know, call this number if you have any questions. And people walking their dog can, you know, it develops a little organization, how a community, a neighborhood can organize better. And we have to be thinking of these sorts of steps, even if we don't want to. I'm also worried about the arsenic and poison levels contaminants within the soil. You know, Michelle Obama used to always offer, you know, these fennel plants and plants like that. You put a lot in there and then they really suck out a lot of the bad poisons in, in, you know, low-income neighborhoods. Good luck on working on these issues and.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. First of all, I got, I got to tip my hat. And I've got to say just, this, this community is, is by far the most active, the most united, the most vociferous that I've ever seen. I have not seen this, I've been doing this for three years, okay? I have never seen this amount of complete commitment to ensuring that their community is safe. Not only from people that they feel might threaten it, but that they are also safe from the politicians. This is, I think we need to explore that a little bit. Because it's worthy of exploration. Because I've sat there and I've listened, I've read to the commitment that, you know, because they're sworn officers, just like the police department. Politicians are sworn to the duty of the, not only the upholding of the Constitution. But also the safety and security of the residents. Well, sometimes that safety and security from the residents requires safety and security from the politicians that stand over them. Sometimes it goes in the reverse. And, and I think that as a society, we have to be okay with that, we have to be very okay that politicians can put our lives in danger. And I think this is a perfect example of that. You see, because look, if a parent knowingly put a child into an area where they knew that there was arsenic. You would have CPS, foster care, every single one of those agencies that Councilwoman Arenas advocates for and on behalf of. Like a soldier she does this. I think they would be there immediately to remove those children and to hold those parents accountable. My question is. Why can't we do that to the politicians that make those decisions to the citizens that they swore an oath to protect? Thank you.
Thank you, bringing it back to the committee, can I get a motion please?
Motion and note and file.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, on to the consent calendar, and I'm gonna go to the public first.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, and I see no hands from the public, so we're gonna go ahead and Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is community violence prevention and response. And Councilmember Prowlus, do you want to go to the public first, or do you want to speak to this first?
Oh yeah, we can go to the public first.
All right. First public speaker is Paul. Go ahead Paul.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe, I would like to. Bring to attention the two letters that were written by the Behavioral Health Contractors Association of Santa Clara County and Mr. David, Mr. Dave Truslow's letters. I really hope that you take consideration of these two letters, I'm gonna quote one of them. "We are pleased to see that the memo addresses the social and cultural factors of stigma that creates barriers. Stigmas that create barriers to individuals from seeking help. We appreciate the memos specifies that we need to work together towards dispelling the stigma that is being considered as part of this approach. The outcome of any efforts will be severely diminished if it concurrently increased. That is so prevalent in our society." End quote. That was written by Alyssa Koff Ginsburg, I'd like to extend my gratitude for this letter, along with over forty organizations that the city and the county contract with. Okay, um. This right here, I, as a victim of domestic violence, as a perpetrator of domestic violence, as a, as, as, as a victim of sexual assault. Which I am all three. I take great exception to Councilman Prowlus. Politicizing violence against victims. Because all of the work in Mr. David Truslow's letter, it states specifically, this is all redundant work. Councilwoman Arenas has done exceptional job at the protection of children, at the protection of women. And maintaining that those policies stay in place. And this right here, Councilman Prowlus, you were using this, you were using the victims of this type of violence. In order to aggrandize yourself and uplift your own political obligations to your developer buddies? This is, this, this needs to stop, no more.
All right, Brian? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you Vice Mayor. I, I didn't get a chance to read the full memo, sorry, but I just want to speak mainly to. Domestic violence is, can, stays with people for the rest of their lives and. I won't go into my quote-unquote story or anything like that, but it's. I just want to encourage that we need to reach out and, and maybe on a bigger scale. President Biden was right, we've got to not. Violence is all over the place, violence by our military and maybe it's necessary, maybe it's not. The last twenty years might make us scratch our head, we think we would have learned after, with the football of Saigon. But as a species, we have the ability to end us. And you would think that that would be. An overarching factor in the fact that we could make this world. Not habitable anymore. And there's no other species that we know of in the entire universe that can do that, except for us. And we don't seem to take that seriously, violence on a national level, state level, local level, and in the family. If peace starts in the family, it's gonna resonate. And it's not a choice anymore, it's a have to, or, you know, we may not have another couple generations, we, we have weapons of mass destruction now that literally can end us. And it's something we should take great pause over, thank you.
Thank you. Blair?
Hi, thank you. I guess a quick nod to the consent calendar that had an item about dumpster day issues, and that's about community coming together and learning to work together better. Vision Zero, that's, that is the overarching goal of Vision Zero, it's meant to work kind of like the Via Caya program that we had last Saturday. Or was it Sunday? You know, it's the idea that, you know, it's how to create a community effort towards things and what Councilperson Prowlus is another example of that. What Brian just spoke about was interesting, interestingly, what I wanted to talk about myself today. The local level, our local communities have to do a lot, basically to clean up the messes of our, you know. National and international governments and state governments. There was a whole set of gun mandates that were set across at the federal level back in two thousand and seven, that basically started, you know, the whole. Series of incidents in Mexico, led to past inferior stuff. It was just a mass proliferation of American manufactured and European, Western European manufactured guns. To be sure, to be sold in this country to totally exclude the Eastern European and Russian market. Now, we have this serious gun violence issues on our hands, and we have to learn to address this. We have to learn to address the concepts of state violence. It's up to local communities with their good practices, care and decency, that I think can really do that. And, and we have to learn how to work collectively together at the local level. And make very serious demands in the future of our, of our international and national governments. I think we have that capability and power, I think we're learning that capability and power. And we have to learn how to organize ourselves better around that. So this is good efforts by Councilperson Prowlus, we're gonna build in a really important democratic good future.
Thank you, Kurt? He dropped off, Tessa?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate what Brian said, but who knows who Brian is? And the thing is, I asked Tony Tabor in terms of our council to say the last name. And I think that we need to have each other's names. And also, the ideal thing would be that we would have the contacts, you know, when, you know, we don't even see who participates. We can't ask them to give us our card, you know, and this way you are breaking the community. And the community is stronger when we can connect with each other, that's democracy, that's union. That's unity that we need to solve the problems that we have. And when somebody talks truth like Brian did, we need to connect with him and be able to create a coalition. But you're not helping us with that, by not allowing us to see who's participating, you don't allow us to talk to each other in the participating list. And, and. So anyway, that, that's one of the problems. And the, you know, the way we, we solve our problems is through unity. And so, that, that's something that needs to be fixed, I'm just gonna put my other headset on, because maybe I can't hear myself. Anyway, and so, and then basically, hopefully you hear me. I was saying that. You know, in terms of violence, yeah, we need to get rid of the, the guns of the police, we have to start there and be an example. That's one issue. And that, that's where they, they learned it in, in, there was a trial where a policeman put the gun down on the car. And it de-escalated the event. And so, we have to be the first as leaders, we have to be the first to drop the bomb, you know, to drop the guns and also drop the bombs. I mean, it, our whole society is so violent. And then on top of it, the violence that we, that we produce on each other from the pollution. Every time we, we pollute, we are hurting each other. That is the, that is the root of violence, that we can't tell our children not to, you know, kill each other. When we, every day we drive our car, every day we pollute, we are killing each other.
Thank you, Jonathan?
Hi, my name's Jonathan Fleming, and thanks for letting me speak here. Councilmember Prowlus, you know, I applaud you for your efforts here, especially addressing mental health and the aspect. How that portrays a violence in our community. And I just want to make sure that our city council, you know, addresses the county for holding them responsible to their obligations to us, the residents. So, I hope that's part of that here. Going into this, I was very concerned with the posting and the noticing of the meeting. You know, instead of the standard ten days, you know, for the sunshine rules, this was posted forty-eight hours or less. Prior to the meeting, and I'm just wondering, you know, does the Brown Act or sunshine apply to all public meetings, and if so, why isn't that followed? I see clarification on your memo, item number five. It says, where is it? A future program that trains mental health professionals to conduct evaluations for firearm permitting. What, what does that mean? Is the city council gonna get into the permitting business now for, you know, rights protected by the Second Amendment? Or what exactly does that mean, so that's just clarification I'm looking for there. I also am seeking clarification on another issue. Talking about expanding the. Where is it, the red flag laws? What, what exactly are we gonna be expanding? I know that Senator Cortezzi is working on that with DA Rosen. And what exactly is the city council going to be supporting if this is passed? I think that's important to know what we're supporting before it's, you know, approved. And lastly, I just want to state that there was one point of contention. And you said that you strongly supported a measure requiring gun insurance. Well, I think that was from the, the June sixteenth memorandum, a mayor locarto places a barrier, a financial fee as a restriction to the free exercise of a right. And that's unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt, you made it back. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, thank you Vice Mayor. And thank you, council members, for, for hearing this item and for Councilman Prowlus for putting something like this forward. It, it, to me, it really shows the spirit of good faith efforts for community outreach and community collaboration. I'll echo what Jonathan just talked about with, at least highlighting the health professionals evaluating firearms permitting. That sounds really dicey and a slippery slope that the city's trying to dip its toe into, I hope that gets a lot of scrutiny. I also looked at the council prioritization, early consideration response form, and it scored an eleven. It's like spinal tap, it's an eleven, it turned up really high. And to me, that tells me that there needs to be, kind of pump the brakes a little bit before you jump into that. I see a lot of green things on the explanations, but one of them is only green if the county dives in with that. So that's a really important consideration. And I guess i- in the true spirit of collaboration. And I, what I hope Councilman Prowlus will, will do is, is really push back on the June sixteenth memos with a dozen or so. And it obviously includes the vice mayor too, but this is, this is Councilman Prowlus's memo, to really push back on the mayor's ten-plus items specifically on the fee and the insurance. Until something like this is done, I mean, Councilman Prowlus, you're one of the co-signers of that memo. And that flies in the face of the very thing you're trying to do right here, which is outreach, collaboration. None of that has happened from the mayor's talking points, when Councilmember Davis actually listed some agencies and organizations and people. I don't think any of them have been outreach to, I know I haven't been outreach to, and I've been active, I participated in a forum with Vice Mayor Jones. I really hope that organizations like the Silicon Valley Public Accountability Foundation can be engaged. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, before we bring it back to the panel, I just want to make a note that, as was mentioned in the early consideration form. Everything was a green, and one item that was a green was also a possible yellow. But, just wanted everybody to make note of that and. Gonna hand it over, back over to Councilmember Prowlus.
And thank you, Vice Mayor.
Before you start, I just wanted to note as the city clerk that the agenda was posted on Friday. So we did follow the Brown Act and also the city's sunshine rules.
Thank you for that clarification, Tony.
Yeah, thank you Tony. And appreciate the speakers who came out on what is an important topic to me. And. And although I typically don't respond to some of the fallacies purported by. By community members, I will say, I take personal offense to Paul Soto purporting that this may somehow be politically driven. I lost a personal, longtime family friend at this VTA. Mass shooting and have dedicated a lot of time and effort into considering a very thoughtful approach. As to how we could make our community safer. And I did provide a slideshow for the staff, if you don't mind pulling that up, I'd like to walk my, walk through my memo for my colleagues and then. And then happy to hear staff's response as well on the early consideration form after. Yeah, thank you, and I'll indicate when we should change a slide, so. First off. You know, I want to thank the committee for hearing this proposal today. I'm proposing what we're calling a community violence prevention and response initiative. And as we all know. In the midst of chaos and aftermath of mass shootings, like what we saw here at the VTA mass shooting on May twenty-sixth. There's always high-profile, even national coverage on these incidents. But once the, the cameras and, and the news media have left. What remains is our community working to recover and be able to move forward and hopefully be able to learn and improve. And this is why I stress the importance that what we are talking about is violence happening within our, our community. You can move to the next slide. So, some will assume that the problem is violent such as mass shootings. However, as we know, that is actually only a small part of the problem, when looking at the data according to the CDC. In two thousand and nineteen, sixty percent of deaths from firearms in the United States were suicides. And thirty-seven percent of total deaths from firearms were homicides. And 37% of total deaths from firearms were homicides. 68% of substance-related homicides nationwide are related to guns. And the rate of suicide risk is much higher when an individual has access to a firearm. And in 2008, it was reported that Californians are 57 times more likely to commit suicide one week after purchasing a firearm. If we can go to the next slide. So what I'm proposing is is not is is not something that is going to be an end all be all to eliminate all violence in our city. And as a former active duty and current reserve officer, I am practical enough to know that. But what I'm hoping is for us to take a different approach when it comes to gun violence. It is crucial that we must create policies that effectively address mental and psychological health, specifically substance abuse, suicide, and intimate partner violence and homicide. I've broken down my proposal into three specific areas. Proactive workplace safety and culture evaluation, something that we have pointed a need to at VTA as well. And that work is beginning. Trauma recovery and resiliency and firearm violence prevention. I want to say thank you to our staff as well for your early consideration form and for being able to issue a green light for majority of the proposals here. If you can go to the next slide. So while we cannot control how other businesses and companies manage the well-being of their employees, we can definitely do so here in our own house. Three weeks ago, along with our vice mayor here, in his role as the VTA vice chair, as well as VTA Chair Glenn Hendricks and Supervisor Chavez, asked that VTA conduct an evaluation of workplace safety and culture. While we have not received reports here in the city of San Jose, we should not wait until an incident or for an incident to occur in order for us to do so. The VTA shooting should give us all pause. And as the largest city in the South Bay employing over 6,500 employees, we should be conducting our own evaluation and be proactive about it. Furthermore, in speaking with our county's behavioral health services department, they stress the importance of increasing and promoting wellness programs for employees. The county is in the process of developing an app, I believe, to help their employees manage stress. I believe our SJPD, sounds like this department even has a similar app that promotes physical wellness as well. And yesterday, the city council unanimously approved a contract for Managed Health Network for Employee Assistance Programs and Critical Incident Stress Management Benefits and the Mental Health Services for Substance Abuse Treatment. These are the tools we should be exploring and aggressively promoting. Simultaneously, we should also continue to keep an open channel of communication with our county's Behavioral Health Services Department, as well as any potential partners in the private sector on how we can improve these programs. If you can go to the next slide. We have seen in the past several years too many events of mass victimization from the VTA rail yard shooting, Gilroy Garlic Festival, and even the attack at Grace Baptist Church. These incidents clearly show that we as a city need to be more prepared in regards to providing the necessary resources and support for those who have experienced trauma. There is an opportunity here and now where the city should participate in the development of a permanent trauma recovery center with the Board of Supervisors as they have recently approved at their board. This is a resource that will be critical in an emergency response, especially as we continue to see mass victimization and traumatic incidents occurring in our community. If you can go to the next slide. So San Jose has taken steps in strengthening our gun violence prevention measures such as requiring guns to be stored in lock boxes when they're not in use, mandating that owners have gun liability insurance, requiring that gun dealers' dealers post suicide prevention information in their storefronts. However, as we continue to move forward, I believe having the city auditor and staff gather the necessary data on our firearms policies, programs, and firearm deaths will allow us to evolve our policies and programs. Simultaneously, I believe we must start a conversation with the county on how we can enact more mental health, intimate partner violence, and prevention and substance abuse measures to prevent individuals from harming themselves or others with a gun. One of those ideas is exploring the feasibility of mental health evaluations as part of our gun regulatory process. Regardless, what I'm asking for is simply a conversation with our community partners as it is important that we approach this thoughtfully, transparently, and inclusively. In addition, I know that Senator Cortez has suggested working with our district attorney on strengthening our own red flag laws. I believe we should monitor that work through its development stage. Next slide. So to summarize the goals and expectations from this initiative, first, we want to ensure the city of San Jose is indeed a positive place to work. Second, that our employees have all the support they need to thrive. Third, that we take part in the conversations around developing a countywide trauma recovery center and make it part of our emergency response infrastructure if possible. Fourth, that we collect the data on San Jose's gun deaths and evaluate our city's firearm regulatory programs. And finally, that we start an inclusive conversation on how psychological and social factors can play a bigger role in preventing firearm violence violence and explore solutions that aren't solely focused on the hardware itself. And last slide, please. So I just want to close by saying no policy change or update is is ever going to bring back those who have lost their life to gun violence. Like my own friend, Michael Rudemekin, and the millions of other people that continue to grieve for their loved ones. But I don't want to wait until another gun death or another mass shooting for us to reexamine our city's roles in protecting our community from firearm violence. I hope that what I put forth is something that is comprehensive, community-driven, and inclusive of all the issues that are connected to gun violence rather than just focusing on the firearms themselves. And with that said, I'd like to move approval of my memo and happy to hear staff's feedback on their early response, early consideration.
Right, before we get a second, Lee, do we even need a motion since everything is greenlit?
You do need a motion still to to move Councilmember Peralas's memo, even though it is greenlit, yes.
All right. All right, it's been moved a second. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to thank you, Councilmember Peralas, for, as you said, trying to do a comprehensive look at at what leads to firearm violence and really highlighting the impact that firearms have on suicides. I think that's a really important topic to bring up and one that we haven't discussed in the past. I do have a couple of questions. There was one area that it said that said the city auditor needed to to weigh in. So I want to give Joe that chance to weigh in about the the audit. We looked at your work plan when we have approved your work plan already, Joe, so I wanted to to talk about that item.
Thank you, Councilmember. So I did speak with the Councilmember Peralas's office about potential timing and how it would be prioritized. We have, as you know, we have a pretty full work plan right now, so it probably wasn't something we could take on till toward the end of the year. But as I bring forward our monthly report, is this this committee can always weigh in on prioritization in terms of what's coming up next. But we can take, you know, as as the the project is defined and out of the regulatory processes and policies, that's something we can take on, but probably toward the end of the fiscal year, as opposed to anything soon, as we're pretty pre-booked right now with active projects.
Okay, and I see that Lieutenant Donahue is on in terms of the the data that's being requested. I think that would probably come through PD and and just to ensure that Joe's team has has the data to do their their audit. Is that data that you're already collecting?
Thank you, Councilmember. First off, I'd like to apologize for being in a t-shirt. I'm in training all day in CPT. Yeah, sorry about that. As far as the data is concerned, there's some data in in the recommendation that we don't collect as an agency, but some we do. So for the city auditor, we'll prepare any data that they request that we have available to us. I do know that the the Pacific Institute for Research and Evaluation is doing a study. They'll have data that we'll have access to and and provide that to the city auditor. But the county data is going to be a little more difficult to come by. It's going to have to come through the county and will, of course, work with the auditor to try to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. And I saw Sarah, you put your camera on, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to weigh in on this question.
Thank you, Councilmember. I I think Steve actually pretty much covered it. There is some dependencies here because the police department doesn't actually collect a lot of the data points that are being requested. But we're going to work with the auditor's office, and where needed, we'll work with the police department to reach out to the county.
Okay, thank you. I did have another question. So the county's already come up. And and in terms of what you were thinking about the trauma recovery center, what are your thoughts on what San Jose's role would be or or any city's role? We're not the only city in the county, and the county is really driving that. And and I personally believe that the county's mandate to provide social services, that that falls squarely in their court. So I'm wondering what your what your thoughts are about what that role should be, Councilmember Peralas.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Davis. And it is a brand new effort being brought forward by the county just approved a a couple of weeks ago. And what I wanted to do was ensure that we are getting involved very early in that process so that we can determine what is our best fit. I would agree with you. It is, I think, predominantly a role for the county. But we know that it's also a service that is going to benefit our our city and the other cities in the county. And I don't think it would be wise to try and recreate the wheel, if you will, in each individual city. I do think that we should be able to lean on the county for this service. And and I think if we can partner with them now as they're developing the program, then we can determine where we best fit into that, how we can, you know, utilize that as a service and what that partnership would look like. We we have services today, for instance, that I'm personally familiar with through the police department when you're involved in a traumatic incident and support services that you may be able to benefit from. So we we have some of this, but on a broader level for all of our city employees, it's not as robust. Certainly, when we have an incident like this that happens within the jurisdiction of the city, but maybe even another partner agency, I think it's to our benefit and not just the city, as you point out, all cities and public agencies in the county that we we work with the county as they're building out this this new program.
Well, I completely agree. I think that more coordination with the county is always better. And as much as we can can strengthen those relationships and forge those bonds, I I completely support that. The last question I have is about the the mental health evaluations. I didn't understand exactly where you were. Can you say more about what you were thinking about for the mental health evaluations? And whether that would be something that would be at the city level or at the county level and and what that would, what that would look like?
Yeah, so there's actually some efforts happening in DC to to try and impose some mental health evaluations on individuals wanting to purchase firearms. So I know there's work going on with that. I did not want to outright make that recommendation. I don't know enough about it personally. I think that we should explore it that more. Similarly, with other regulations that we will put forward, that's why I I I'm also asking that we sort of audit that and we take a look at some of these regulations that we've already passed or ones that we may be passing over the next several weeks or months. And this one, knowing that this was coming forward, it is something that intrigued me and that I I was inclined to to want to try and find out more about and maybe even support. But without knowing enough about it, that's why I wanted to include it here so that that way it's work that we look into. And ultimately, it may be something that we do bring forward as a another regulation on the purchasing of firearms. But for now, it's it was about exploring that so that we can learn more.
Okay, so it's not it's not suggesting that we do this. It's just looking at what other what's what's happening elsewhere and kind of watching that? Is that kind of what you were thinking about?
Yeah, and and the first thing too was one of the things that we've learned is that it it's not something that even if we were to, let's say, impose a law like this, or if the the federal government was to. What we've come to understand is that within our mental health profession, that that those professionals aren't necessarily trained for something like that. That's not something that that they would readily be able to take on. And so that's why we're asking to to determine the feasibility of such an effort. Again, knowing that there's already advocacy for it at at the federal level. There may be some, as we all know, there may be some laws being passed at the federal or or state level. There's a lot of discussions of new restrictions at the state level that we may just have imposed on us. And so whether we we necessarily agree with them or not, this is one of those that's been brought to my attention. And so really understanding the feasibility of it with the professional network we have is what the first question that I'm I'm asking. I'm not advocating at the moment that this be something that we do.
Okay, that's that's great to hear because we don't, as a city, employ mental health professionals. That's not something that we that we have. And again, that's one of those areas where behavioral health is is under the purview of the county. So that's where I was, I had a question. In terms of legislation, you know, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's why I put that one under, if we were to have a future joint meeting with the county, that's why I placed that in there. That's really the place to have that discussion because we we having it amongst ourselves is not going to be a benefit. Having it with the county would be.
Right, yeah, I totally agree. If we, and I'd like to actually go so far as to say, if we can't have a joint study session about this, I don't really see the the purpose, honestly, of having a study session on our own about about these kinds of topics because there are so many that you listed that really require our county partners to to be part of that conversation and really to tell us what resources they've already dedicated or that they're going to be dedicating to these to these initiatives. So I I do appreciate that and and always the recognition that that we are partners with the county and also that what happens at the state level is something that we need to watch is is really good and and of course, necessary. So I I will be, I'll be supporting it. I I do think, you know, it's it's so important to talk about that mental health aspect. And I know that you and your family have have struggled with the the grief of, you know, losing your your close friend. And in in addition to being a city leader at this time during during the mass shooting, I just, my heart goes out to you and I really, I admire you for for taking this on as a as a policy initiative when you're when you're still hurting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you, Chair. I also will start off by thanking you, Councilmember Peralas. I know that this is personal to you. As most of us who are involved in public service, we're we're really inspired by things that happen in our lives. And so I know that this comes from a genuine place in in your life and 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 the reason to do so is the right reason. And I'll share, I think I've shared before, when I was 19, I I I lost a friend to intimate partner violence, and she was killed by her boyfriend. And it really changes the way that you date, right? Especially at a very early, oh, well, early dating age. And so that's one of the reasons why I am very focused on sexual assault and and gender-based violence. And I know that you've been very supportive, and I'm really grateful for that. And so I know it comes to no surprise to me that that you would put this plan forward. I know that we saw in PIS with that you chair, I don't have to tell you, but I'm going to tell some of the audience that is here that may not have attended our Public Safety Strategic Support Committee last week, that we went over some Police Department Duty Manual updates. I had requested some updates on or so duty manual changes on physical abuse for children, investigation of sex crimes, human trafficking and domestic violence. And one of the things that that is important is that we start integrating some of the changes that we're making as a society, as a culture, integrating them into the way into formally so that we can then have a policy around it, and then we can have training about it on it. And then we can create a rule shift in our culture based on a new information from research on best practices, on lessons learned. And and I've got to say, you know, I've got to thank Lieutenant Donahue and and of course, our our chief. Um, and Captain Jimenez for, for their great work on gender-based violence and some of the changes that they've had to make and, and standard operating procedures that they've had to develop because they took a moment, uh, from their work and realized that this, th- these pieces were missing. And so I think that this is, this is really in line with that kind of thinking and the efforts that I'm making in that sometimes we, we're just doing, we're just responding to emergencies and we have to take a moment to say, how do we align the efforts, um, that we need to, um, as policymakers with what is happening in our culture and in our community. And I think this is an excellent plan. I look forward to seeing how we can, uh, cross-reference some of these things. Um, especially around, of course, uh, the intimate partner violence. I know that Councilmember Carrasco has been working on this since she started, um, her term and that's her area of, of specialty and, um, in terms of leadership. And, um, I advocate for sexual assault because it, I was kind of left out, but those two things, as we know, intersect quite a bit. And the other thing that intersects is these perpetrators in, um, the interacting with the law. And if, you know, you, you cited a couple of incidents that have happened here in San Jose and of those incidents, there was a history of intimate partner violence from those perpetrators. And, uh, research has already been established that, that kind of crime is very indicative of, of, um, if, not to say that it's a, uh, the first step towards, um, more aggravated, um, crimes. Um, you know, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but I know I've read enough to, to know that this can lead. And, and we know, uh, from last week that aggravated assaults have gone up, that rape has gone up. Um, all of the violent crimes in our city, um, have gone up last, from last year, um, in comparison to two thousand nineteen. And so we can't just acknowledge these things. We have to do something about it. And I'm really, uh, grateful that you have this action plan. One of the things I'm, I'm wondering if maybe this is something we could discuss with the, with the, uh, gosh, where is the RFQ? This is, the RFQ is to do an organization-wide, uh, culture and climate evaluation. And that is typically just for our employees, correct?
Yeah, that's more in, uh, internal looking, just, just within, uh, our, our workplace here in, in the city of San Jose. Which I believe the staff's, uh, early consideration form addressed, why the RF, um, PRQ would not be, would not be needed.
I and, um, and so on your item number four, you have, um, a report from, uh, our police department on causes of firearm, firearm-related deaths and injuries, including suicides. And I would, um, love if you could include, um, gender-based or intimate partner violence, um, in relation to some of those, uh, firearm-related deaths. I think we also need to see the relationship between the, those two. We know where, we know that in the last eight years rape has gone up. And when rape goes up, the other aggravated assaults also go up. And those types of crimes just lead to, to, uh, more, more, uh, violent crimes. And we, we really need to start looking at how serious rape and sexual assault is. And that this is the, this is a place to really intervene. Um, um, and so I, I'd love for us to, um, cross-reference our work plan or gender-based work plan that we have under, uh, under Public Safety Strategic um, committee. And then this plan to see if there's any, uh, places that we can work together around. There's no sense in us doing some of the, you know, peripherally, we're doing something, uh, similar. But I think we need to connect violence with, um, intimate partner, um, violence. Because there's absolute, um, correlation there. Um, and I'm glad you're, you're, you're heading this up. But the, the last thing I'll just say is that I was in a meeting with Eset Union High School District and, um, uh, high school in my district. Because there was, uh, you know, there's a, an uptick in violence around all of our high schools and, you know, with no surprise in terms of, we knew that there was a lot of bottled up feelings, um, for our youth. A lot of folks feeling isolated, a lot of kiddos feeling isolated and, including my own children and, and with good reason because of this pandemic. But that also has a social, um, reaction, right? We're, we're, we're also going to pay for that, um, sacrifice that we all made in terms of staying away from one another. And I hope that we can a- also move into, um, youth-related violence as well. I know that speaking to so, some of the school liaisons, they, uh, and, and it was, it, I was talking to, to one of our police officers who was a school liaison and he said, you know, that he foresaw, this is before school started, that there was going to be an increase in, in violence and, um, and he was absolutely right. I, I hate that he was right, but, but I understand why. And so I think that, that if you could include our youth somehow in your plan, um, so that it could be very specific. It's different to, to relate and target youth than it is to target women, then to target adults and to target different subgroups and within our community. Thank you.
And, and if I may, uh, Chair, could I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, and I, I appreciate that. I, I think obviously there, there's a narrow focus here on firearm-related violence, but you know, as, as you have been beating the drum and, and bring up really good points on where we find the, the cross-section of intimate partner violence and, and, and then, and then ultimately, you know, a number of those people being the same people that are committing gun violence. Um, I do think that's important to see where that crossover is and maybe how frequent it is. As we know, I think we've had some preliminary data through our conversations before. Uh, I think we won't be surprised to see a high correlation of, of individuals committing, uh, gun violence that also have histories of intimate partner violence. Um, and then similarly where, um, we have, uh, some youth, I think, uh, uh, obviously being able to break down the demographics of age, um, should be, be something, uh, that the police department is capable of doing as they generate the report. But I'll, I'll ask that to Lieutenant Donahue. It may take more time and look, I'm not, I'm not against obviously being able to, to allow the time necessary to come back with, um, the, the information that is going to be most helpful to us. Uh, but here from you Lieutenant Donahue, how, um, how would that look as far as if you were to, to this, uh, recommendation four from my memo, if you were to also then try to incorporate, uh, intimate partner violence for these individuals that are, you know, uh, that, that we get some data on, on firearm-related death and injuries. How much of that has a connection or how many of those individuals, those suspects have had a, a connection to intimate partner violence? Is that something that can be incorporated? Fairly easy or just if you can describe?
Um, sure. Thank you, Councilmember. A clarifying question, if you will. When we talk about, uh, recommendation four, I thought it was more along the lines of suicide and gun violence, like self-harm suicide. Or were you looking more along the lines of gun violence, like gang-related gun violence and, and assault with a deadly weapon kind of thing?
So it was, uh, it was actually all firearm-related deaths and injuries. And then I said, including suicides uh, in San Jose. So, but, but really, I mean, it didn't even have to say included. The idea was all firearm-related deaths and injuries. We just wanted to make sure that that did include suicides. That was not necessarily just, you know, uh, firearm-related injuries to others. It was also firearm-related death or injuries to, to oneself. Uh, so in that, at that data, it would be, it would be all of it. So it wouldn't be just gang-related. It wouldn't be, you know, it, it would be really all firearm-related deaths and injuries.
So if we, if we look at it that way, it would be the same kind of data. We could just extrapolate out whether or not that person, um, there was a IPV-related incident. Um, as far as doing criminal histories on subjects, that would take a lot longer um, to determine whether or not they have a history of IPV with, um, if they're, if it wasn't involved in that particular incident. Um, because we'd have to look it up subject by subject, but, uh, it's not that it can't be done. It's just going to take a little more time.
Okay, um, so easy enough to connect it to if that actual incident of firearm injury or death was related to IPV, but not necessarily, um, as easy to then determine, say for instance, somebody that committed suicide, did they also have a history of, you know, intimate partner violence? Uh, I would be interested. I recognize it would take more time. I'd be interested, especially if we can come back to, to PIS fiz with some preliminary results on something that was a little bit more easier data to gather. And then what, what I think we can do, uh, and Councilmember Ennis, tell me if you think that this would, would suffice. At, uh, PIS fiz, we can then give the further direction to then dive down a little deeper. And maybe we can start with the last year versus the last five years, right? So then that way you can look at individual suspect data from, from just a year. And maybe you can return that, um, personal history on those, uh, subjects quicker. Uh, because I do think we're, we'll, we'll see some alarming, um, corollaries. And I, I think that would be helpful information. Would, would that be uh, acceptable, Councilmember Ennis?
Yeah, so that would be acceptable as long as we change our work plan somehow to incorporate it formally and, and we don't forget it. I, a- absolutely open. Thank you for, for your consideration.
Yeah, and I'm happy to include it in this motion that I've made. We're on this item number four, that we are actually specifically calling out the, that we want the data also to show the correlation between intimate partner violence. Um, and then I think just for, you're in my purpose that we'll do our part when it comes to PIS fiz to then dive down a little deeper because of what Lieutenant Donahue just said, that it, it may take a little bit more time.
Right, and you're already, it sounds like you're already breaking it down by age or that's something that's can be easily done. Got it. Okay, wonderful.
I see, uh, Sarah wants to weigh in. Um, go ahead, Sarah.
Hey, thank you so much, Councilmember. Um, so I just want to clarify, um, to make sure that we're clear from the staffing side, what we're able to do. And, and Steve, please jump in if I'm characterizing this incorrectly. When we greenlit this particular item, we were very much, uh, thinking that we would work off of, one, uh, the auditor's report. And two, the existing report that's being done by the, the third party. We weren't thinking we're going to try and compile a third body of work, um, because a lot of the, the data sets are going to be the same. So I, I wanted to clarify that piece that we were very much going to work off of the existing research projects. Um, the other pieces, as I understand it from the police department, a lot of the data sets are, are not collected by the police department as it relates to, to the deaths. Is that, is that correct, Steve? And we'd have to work with the county and the medical examiner for that information?
Yes, uh, actually, if you give me just a second, I'll, I'll speak on that. Um, Councilmember Peralis, you'll probably remember this. The, when we take a, an incident report and say, for example, it's a suicide by firearm. And we believe it to be that thing. We don't actually, um, identify it as that. The cause of death is identified by the county when the coroner um, and does the investigation. Therefore, they actually have the record of what deaths by firearm occurred and we just have an unattended death or something to that effect. So, um, to obtain that particular information on firearm violence from deaths by firearm, it would have to actually come from the county. And then we could, we could articulate, say, an assault with a deadly weapon with a firearm or something like that, where a firearm was used in the commission of the crime. But because we can track that in our reports, it's just the final result of firearm deaths are the issue. Um, and to speak on Sarah's point about the, the third report, it might be, um, redundant at this point until we have the data compiled by the auditor and the prior report to do that third one. That's why we're asking to, to stand by on that for a little bit until we figure out exactly what's going to be reported back in the mayor's report.
Thank you for that. So, so thank you for adding to that because I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we are very much at the mercy of, um, the county and the medical examiner to get a lot of these data sets. And I don't know the format in which they collect the information, how it can be disaggregated. And I would hate for, um, this body to get, uh, you know, to think that we were able to, to do certain things with the data sets that we aren't able to do. So it w- will certainly explore. I will reach out to them. I'll have the police department ask those questions, but I don't know what that looks like yet.
I think that, to make it maybe a little bit easier too, would be the first, um, item we agendize at PIS fiz could be the feasibility of this recommendation four. So, so then that way you, you, you come back and actually let us know in committee, you know, what you found out, how difficult it was to gather that data from, uh, the county coroner. And, um, and, and then that'd give us an opportunity. Again, I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, push this in front of other work. The idea was, and, and yes, that, that's what we mentioned about, um, you know, working after that audit, uh, right? And, and not being redundant in the data. Um, I still would like to ensure that once we do uh, get this data, that it does incorporate what Councilor Ennis is talking about. But, but I'm not saying that this needs to, you know, come back as a third report standalone, you know, in two months to PIS fiz. I, I recognize that there's other challenges there and that, um, I think the first thing we can do is, is maybe as you, if, if staff Lieutenant Donahue can come back to PIS fiz with the feasibility of this, this recommendation for on how difficult it was to, to gather that data. You know, I think we should be able to do it. Um, and I think you would agree. It's just a matter of what, what does that challenge look like since it's not the data that we own?
All right. Councilmember Arenas, you sag your hand up, uh.
I raised it again, Chair.
Okay.
Um, and the reason I raised it is that there is i- in the, uh, works is a sexual assault joint meeting in November and, uh, Councilmember, um, I think if it works out for everyone and, and it, uh, actually is placed on the schedule, that this could be an, another opportunity for us to ask for that data from the county as something that would be important for us to continue to have on an ongoing basis. But, you know, uh, you as a chair can, you know, we can figure out how that looks on the agenda.
Yeah, thank, and I, I just got a, a, a message as well that, uh, it was something the county supervisors recently requested was that the coroner, uh, make public, uh, and release their, uh, reports. Um, and, um, they had, I guess they requested because they wanted to know for COVID-related deaths, fentanyl-related deaths. But the reports included all deaths. It would, so that that data, I guess, has now been made public. Um, so maybe a little bit easier to, you know, to go in, in, and find, um, than, than we think.
Great. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, um, that I also agree that, uh, Councilmember Peralis, I, I know that your proposal is heartfelt and, and genuine and not political. And there's no doubt in my mind that that's the case. And I also wanted to comment on how it's very hard, need to see, uh, proposals that are going to prevent some of these tragedies from happening. Yeah, and I'm not a either or person, I'm an and person. So I believe that our prior gun harm reduction, uh, direction and proposals are needed. And I believe that your proposals that you're putting out right now are needed. And so, you know, we should pursue an and strategy to try to reduce gun, gun violence and gun harm. So on that note, um, we have a motion in a second. So Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralis?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is, uh, utilizing public lands to end street homelessness in our community. And that's a proposal from Councilmember Mann. And, um, let's go to the public first. Uh, so the first speaker is Robert.
Good afternoon. I want to speak in strong opposition to Councilmember Mann's plan to build a massive ghetto for the homeless at the fairgrounds. We know from history why ghettos are created. We know from history why ghettos are created and what happens to people who are forced into them. Ghettos are created to isolate, to degrade and to dehumanize people. Not to help them, not to protect them. It is certainly not an accident that this ghetto is planned for the fairgrounds in District Seven. An area which is the residence location for so many low income people of color in San Jose. No one should be deceived by Mr. Mayan's efforts to pretend that his plan doesn't really intend. To concentrate the homeless at the fairgrounds. In his memo, he first states. That the fairgrounds could hold all of the homeless people in the region. Then he adds a disingenuous sentence that of course he didn't really mean the plan that he has just proposed. As many of you know, I've been involved in local government in San Jose for over forty years. I've never seen a proposal so steeped in malice as this one. It should be rejected by every member of the Rules Committee with the contempt that it deserves. There should be no ghettos planned in San Jose. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Robert. Uh, Tessa?
Thank you. Um, okay. You hear me? Okay, good. Well, thank you, Robert Brownstein. And I got to see who it was because he had his name up in the, and also the, um. Uh, what was it called? The, well, the, the transcript was there, which it wasn't there at city council meeting. And so thank you for that. And thank you, Robert, for your, your thoughts. And, um, basically, you know, the, the issue that I see in terms of public lands. Is a lot of the redevelopment land has been, you know, financialized by our city. And this keeps going on. I mean, it, it's the same thing about that your, your general plan. To make jobs as a priority. And what's happening now is changing so much. We have crises that we have to address and jobs. Actually is, is, is on the bottom. We really need to get universal basic income as we go forward. And create these housing models that I, I've been suggesting that, that, you know, do deal with, you know, people living together. More cooperatively and learning to live without fossil fuels, learning to live without waste and learning to live without plastic. And these are our challenges. And so we need to build housing that, you know, it might, and then I guess the main important thing is urban sustainability. That we need to be growing food wherever we create housing. And this is how we will have urban sustainability and get off fossil fuels. Because it, the way our agriculture is so bad, is so full of fossil fuels. And then driving it in, we, you know, that's going to have to stop. So we have to create those type of housing models where we do grow food. And so that's where, you know, also I've been saying is that we, we need to not be dealing with, you know, any kind of office buildings, hotels. Anything that, excuse me, that deals with fossil fuels. We need to be focusing on our crises, which is hu- housing and, um, our climate.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, good afternoon and thanks for the time. Um, my name is Bill Dowling. I actually represent UPS. Uh, we have our, uh, facility over there on South Seventh Street, just a couple of blocks away from the fairgrounds. In San Jose, UPS, uh, has eight hundred employees that are domiciled at that facility and we service over fifty thousand customers in San Jose daily. Over the past couple of years, we've experienced significant impact, uh, from the homeless population that currently exists outside of our building. Um, in the form of trespassing, violent acts on employees, uh, property damage, theft, fires, et cetera. Uh, we currently spend over ten thousand dollars a month in repairs and security costs to try and protect our facility. Um, in addition to our business expenses, our employees also incur problems with vehicle break-ins, vehicle theft, intimidation, et cetera. San Jose Police Department is very responsive and we appreciate what they do, but their response is limited. Um, by both, uh, the impact that they have as being one of the most active stations in the area. And also because of, uh, what they can do to respond to certain types of, uh, incidents. We don't feel that doubling down on that, uh, on that negative impact will improve anything. And. What I didn't see in the proposal was any, uh, plan to address. The increased impact, uh, that will come from, uh, adding the extra housing units at the fairgrounds. So we respectfully ask that, uh, the council consider, uh, rejecting that proposal. I'd also like to ask, uh, within District Ten, uh, the councilman who proposed this, uh, how many housing units are? Are there in his district? Thank you.
Thank you. Wiskar?
Uh, good afternoon, uh, members of the committee. My name is Wasker Castro, Associate Director of Housing and Transportation Policy and Working Partnerships. Could provide comment on this matter. Uh, we all recognize the gravity of the homelessness crisis taking place throughout San Jose and the region in general. Further work at all levels will be necessary in order to craft comprehensive solutions for unhoused populations. Uh, we would like to point towards existing efforts such as the community plan and homelessness. Which provides a multifaceted approach from policy to services, all aimed at creating permanent solutions. For homeless individuals and families. Therein lie several opportunities. To support efforts towards creating permanent solutions. In addition, we would like to mention that temporary housing solutions, while important, are in fact just that. Much needed resources from the state level down could be geared towards housing entries for homeless individuals. Uh, and those, those should be dispersed, uh, towards various initiatives. But with an emphasis on creating permanent housing solutions to provide houses residents a home long term. Furthermore, we would like to note that there have been numerous instances of temporary housing initiatives or wage theft violations have taken place. For those workers that are working on building these projects. The injustice towards those working on these projects cannot be overlooked. Through acts such as wage theft, we are now creating housing insecurity for workers also trying to, uh, secure housing in the area. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to voice our concerns.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa?
Hi, um, thank you for the opportunity. I want to respond to was to Bill Dowling. Uh, District Ten has no, no, they have zero. Uh, uh, assisted housing and low income housing. So it's kind of preposterous that this proposal is coming from somebody from a very wealthy area. Which has put absolutely no weight on resolving the issue of homeless homelessness in, in the city of San Jose. I sent also my comments via email, but I'm going to read, I'm, 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 I live within one mile of the. Of the fairgrounds. I am impacted by the amount of homeless that are trespassing on our, on our, on our backyard. And that are actually on the, on a Monterey Road. And we do realize that we all have to, everybody has to hold their. To hold some sort of a distribut- distributed, uh, weight on this, uh, to, to try to address this solution. But however, the proposal appears to just put all the weight. On the District Seven community. Within one mile or one mile and a half of the fairgrounds, there's multiple low income, uh, apartment buildings. There's more than, there's multiple assisted. Uh, um, income, uh, communities and they are, are police and our fire department are the most active also within those. Several couple of blocks. So basically what they're saying is like, Robert mentioned at the top is creating a ghetto and putting six thousand homeless people. Within a mile from my home. And this is not only going to impact the safety and security of the people that have their homes and mortgages here, but it's also going to. Drain the resources that we have for police and safety and security. And it's also creating an unfair. An, an unfair, quote, quote ghetto. Uh, notoriously, this District Seven is also low, lower income and more diverse. And with people of color than the other, than the, than the, the councils that are proposing this. So this is not only unfair, but this appears to be also a racist measure. I want the city council to absolutely oppose this proposal. It's unfair and it's racist. Thank you.
Thank you. Person ending in the number seven, three, two, seven.
Hello, uh, my name is Edwina Terea. I wanted to speak more towards the safety aspect. I live directly behind the fairgrounds on Umbargo Road. I live on Kramer Circle. Um, I'd like to invite all of you guys to first. Drive down Umbargo Road on either Center Road or Monterey Road and just look at the homeless people that are living on the. Street directly, right in our properties, right on our houses. We have bus stops that stop in the morning for schools that are in plain sight of the homeless people that are living there right now. There's feces on the street. And then after you drive down there, I want you to answer a couple of questions. Are you okay with your children walking down these streets? Your grandparents walking down these streets? Or are you being a resident walking down these streets? Because right now we have people that walk in the middle of the street. To avoid walking down the sidewalk because of the people that are camped out on the sidewalk currently. And these people are all walking around with large sticks, bats and everything else to protect themselves. I myself have been, uh, threatened twice by these homeless people. And again, somebody else mentioned about the police and the underserving of our district already. The police can't even get out here to respond to a call after I've been threatened to be pepper sprayed by somebody who's living in a car. Uh, within, you know, two to three hours. And by the time they show up. The people are gone and then they come back later because they know the routine. As long as they're not there, nothing will happen. And the police always say that there's only four or five officers in the area at any given time. So I think this committee should also deny this outright. And tell, uh, Councilmember Mahan, you know, ask him how many homeless units are currently in District Ten and ask him to place one in his own district rather than. Further, uh, stretching our, our resources than in our own area. And again, it's creating an unsafe environment as we speak right now. On Umbargo Road in between Center and Monterey Road.
Thank you. Um. The person with the number ending zero, four, five, seven.
Hello, my name is Dave. I'm with Stuckel Supply and I represent Smith Family Property Management. Uh, the impact, I think, on this, um, proposal. Is in such a negative light and way that one of the data points that has not been collected. Is the financial strain that and that, and burden that has been put on the business owners in the community. Uh, I know for a fact our employer has allotted probably close to a hundred thousand dollars a year. Just in combating the, uh, homelessness in the areas of his property that he owns. Uh, and of course, every time there is a situation, we have to rely on the city to help us, uh, while we use the resources that are available to us. Either it's homeless cares, concerns, uh, whether it's, um, illegal dumping, getting picked up, the graffiti. Uh, threats from some of the homeless people, water theft that are stealing from some of our fire, fire sprinkler systems. Uh, it's gotten to the point to where we cannot sustain any more population in the area. Uh, especially if we're bringing in double the amount that we have now. I believe District Ten should also share some of that responsibility. It should not be shouldered on one district only. Thank you.
Thank you. Blair?
Hi, Blair Baikman here. Um, you know, the issue comes up all the time. Do we bring? How can we make the fairgrounds into some sort of homeless encampment? Um, you know, like with what the situation at Columbus Park and, and, and that area being turned into a, a, a soccer fields eventually. You know, the, the airplanes that go overhead, they, they dump tons of fuel and, and fuel exhaust around there, making it a very dangerous place to, to be continuously living. The same with the fairgrounds that, you know, because of all the animals over all the years, there's microbes in the ground. That is not really talked about very much, but we should talk about it. Can be a very serious issue. Uh, in the rainy season especially. That, um, I think just continuously makes the fairgrounds not, uh, a way that we can work. Uh, for, for future homeless issues. And, uh, as much as we want to and, and it's a good idea and, and I hope the government, uh, you know, government sponsorship of local encampments. Small encampments around the city is still going well. Um, I thank you for the efforts of, of the trailer park issue in, in, in District Four. Um, but the arsenic issues does bring up the same sort of questions that we have to have good land prepared for people to live on. We can't just dump them every, anywhere. And, uh, I hope you're working on that District Four issue possibly as needed. Um. I've got twenty-one seconds left here. Uh, just, uh, I, I, I thank you for good intentions, but we have to, we have to, uh, really. You know, respect things and, uh, good luck how we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Go ahead, Todd. If Todd's not ready, let's, um. Put Todd.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Oh, yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead, Todd.
It's, uh, I'm amazed at the comments I'm hearing in this session. Uh, I am an advocate for the unhoused. I'm also a small business owner. It doesn't matter where the challenge, what district the challenge exists. What matters is which district the solution can create. All the issues I've heard today about crime and the ghetto and the, the land issues and the microorganisms and so forth. All these issues are going to be drastically, uh. Curtailed and minimized because you have such a large, uh, encampment of homes, tiny homes. Where you have now, you have unhoused, you have, uh, you have the issues of crime, you have the issues of waste and they're scattered around. We need one large venue where we can keep, put all these, uh, individuals together and we provide services for them. And the, the police would be much more apt to find the issues that, that need to get resolved in one large, one larger venue. The same with the social services. The same with all the different services that can be provided to a larger group. The larger venue, the better. It becomes more synergistic, it becomes drastically more efficient. Right now, there's drastic waste, inefficiency, lack of synergism. It with throughout the whole city. It is a crisis. We need to get this issue resolved, get these, so, some sustainable housing issues, transitional housing like Matt Mahan proposes. So we can help our unhoused people progress and get into normalcy. What kind of society are we that we cannot take care of our, our friends and neighbors? And they, if you get to know these people, you will have a lot of friends and neighbors out there that are unhoused. Please get involved. Please support this initiative. Finally, somebody is taking the stand and doing the right thing.
Thank you, Tasha.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I live in District Seven. So about Councilmember Mahan's proposal feasibility of quick bid. Build house inside of San Clara County Fairgrounds. I don't think it's that simple. We should not be considering the fairgrounds or any other location without first addressing. The different homeless categories that the proposals look into house. A plan for execution, monitoring, and as a strategy and shutdown. You can just throw, you can't just throw a blanket, um, over the solution, forget about it. And we all know how that works. It starts off great. Then funded over time goes away and you have essentially created a residential boundary of impoverished human beings. Similar to emergent of black ghettos in New York City and Chicago. That didn't go well. The familiars in Brazil, of course, after the war. Slums in India and we could go on. There's probably a lot of white papers that discuss this at length. Concentration of the most marginalized did not solve the problem then. And it only propagated a vicious generational homelessness cycle that became too large for anyone to address. You know that not all homeless will benefit from the post-model. Everyone's story is different and one was some different execution plan. Showing all the homeless of San Jose in one concentrated area is not the solution. It's less sedesical approach. It does not solve the problem. It only shifts and grows the problem. What solves the problem are getting people into programs, relocation, new beginnings, so they can benefit and graduate from government subsidized housing eventually. Because it's not the long-term solution. I'd like to know, how many categories of homelessness are we trying to resolve for or house? What execution plan to ensure they can reintegrate and be self-sufficient in society? What are we doing with families that are about to be homeless? We should focus on preventing these from entering a homeless vortex because once they enter, it's hard to get out. Um, needless to say, I'm not in favor of the proposed without well thought out plan. Please consider that this is something out of Hunger Games. Okay?
Thank you. Cory?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right, perfect. So my name is Cory Conder and I'm a firefighter and I'm here representing local two thirty. Uh, we have some concerns about the proposal from Councilmember Mahan. Uh, specifically ones that will impact District Lincoln for the San Jose Police Department. And Station Twenty-Six for the San Jose Fire Department. Uh, while we recognize that the unhoused are one of our most vulnerable populations here in the city. Um, we, we do think that having all of them congregate in one specific area, especially one that's already twenty percent. Busier than any other police district or firehouse in the entire city just might not be the best option. Uh, already, you know, Station Twenty-Six, one of the busiest fire engines in the country, um, that. That it's completely covers all of District 7. And adding to them having more unhoused, more people that traditionally call 911, typically more than the, the average citizen, doesn't necessarily help the situation of trying to control the 911 calls. Currently, our response times in that area can be impacted due to the already homeless population that exists in District 7. As well as, you know, Lincoln for the, for the police officers. I know I heard concerns earlier about crime in the area and we have concerns that adding more pop, unhoused population to that district, it just is going to create more of a problem. So we really like you guys just take the consideration that, you know, having the busiest area of the city and then adding more unhoused might not fix the problem and will put much more fiscal and response time impact to the police department, police department and the fire department. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you. My name is Andrew. I think the proposal from Councilmember Mahan is a good one in concept. Of course, we need more housing for our unhoused community members and the fairgrounds, the, the space is there to do it. I definitely support providing more housing. However, the location, I mean, this needs, these locations that are far from everything else in the city, let's say downtown, I mean. So say you're, you're unhoused and you're saying, and you're staying there. Say there was a place to stay at the fairgrounds. You're trying to get on your feet, you're trying to get work, you know? You need to be able to get to the rest of the world. You need to be able to get to interviews, to downtown. So, you know, isolating people outside of where they can move on with their lives isn't, isn't the best location. And the other point I want to make is that it doesn't seem to me that the city really investigates the causes of problems in general. I mean, what are the causes of unhousedness? Is it just people don't just wake up and they're unhoused for no reason? There are causes of this. The cause is poverty, lack of housing, obviously, but, you know, like say the minimum wage being extremely low. That's one cause. Lack of any decent public transportation, that's another cause. You know, your policies encourage people to own cars and cars are not affordable for a huge segment of the population. So all of these things are connected and the high cost of living drives people to be unhoused. So please think about how you can invest in other things like public transit and the ability to walk and bicycle safely on the streets as a way to address unhousedness and lots of other problems we have, including catastrophic climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Scott.
There we go. The unmute button just popped up there. Good afternoon, everyone. Scott Largin. This kind of, uh, you know, better late than never, I guess is where I'm getting at right now. We've kind of been around this roller coaster for a long time. Too little, too late, might be a good one, too. I, uh, we need a place to go. I, I live out in the, uh, the mop bucket out here at the FAA crash zone, which is pretty much the largest homeless encampment in the state of California. When you put everybody into one mop bucket, you cannot really help them. Everybody has different needs here. And I, I don't see the city really kind of figuring things out on that level. We do need a place to go. I think the fairgrounds would be fantastic. But you guys won't take the time to vet people out and figuring out where they will succeed. You'll just put them all together. You know, in jails, they have classification systems. Not everybody gets stacked together. But that's not the way that what happens in the homeless community. You guys set up your other, um, little gig at 71 Vista, Montana. That, that, that was a big, big disaster. Okay. And you guys know I'm a big time homeless advocate. Putting that right on the other side of the fence of a kid's park was absolutely ridiculous. There's really only two people over there right now and there's seven motorhomes. And you, you, you guys could have succeeded over there if you got the families from maybe out here at Spring Street. Several of the disabled women that are over here near the corner, the Asian gentleman that is just a dynamite guy. Those people would have worked. Okay? And the, the Mexican families over here that are immigrants, they could have brought their children to that playground. The neighbors would have been like, wow, these are good people. They work. They have children, you know, fantastic. Instead, that's not how it worked out. This is just a disaster. And now you're sweeping people from zone to zone out here right now with no.
Thank you. Our neighborhood is important.
Hi, the fairgrounds is a county-owned property, so it should be used for the benefit of all in the county, not a specific group. It should be used for children and teens and seniors. An example of a local city within the county that developed land to benefit all is the Morgan Hill Community Center Aquatic Park and Ballpark. I hope, I hope you all can see it. Such a difference. Kids can play at the ballpark without drug needles there. And this could be developed. They also have a developmental asset, annual asset calendar is a 40-year proven program used in that area to help prevent youth homelessness. District 7, our children in this district, our teens in this district, they deserve the right to play safely in the creeks. That should be a rite of passage. They deserve to walk safely without being threatened, as I myself have been. District 7 is already crowded. It's lacking in safe outdoor space. We have heard from our firefighters. We've heard from our police officers. We heard from Tasha who compared this to the black ghettos in Chicago that, that I have heard so much or read so much about. There has been a large area near North San Jose. It has a plan in place, including housing for thousands, including low income and transitional housing with some funding by Apple. It is held up in litigation by the city of San Jose, Santa Clara and others. And this area is far better suited than District 7, which has been highly impacted. Talking about someone mentioned put them all in one place. Well, that has been done. We have Markham Plaza here. It's on Monterey Road. It's notorious for the crime and violence and drug use, constant police and fire calls. We have the almost new Renaissance Place right near the fairgrounds already. It's a social experiment. It is called a drugless and law environment by the people that live there. The unhoused are important, but so are the children. And putting them all together does not help them integrate in society. It isolates them. District 7 should have, not bear the brunt of the impact of all the different cities that make up Santa Clara County. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? Go ahead, Brian.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Brian Prescott. I'm a member of.
We lost you, Brian. Brian?
Hi, good afternoon. My, my name is Brian Prescott. I'm a member.
Hey, Brian, we're going to put you back in the queue and, and come back to you. Jonathan? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Fleming here and, uh, you know, I'm not going to comment for or against the actual proposal, but I will make a general comment about it. And we need to increase the amount of police presence and numbers, specifically in District Lincoln, Police District Lincoln, City Council District 7. You know, right now, some of the most dangerous calls in our city are at the Markham Plaza Apartments and the Ridduson Place, which are right next door to the proposed site. District Lincoln has the highest rate, call rate in the city and the officers there are always overworked. I have personally organized cleanups for the Tully Ballfields. Again, right next door to the proposed site, where mentally ill people have defecated in front of children, where used syringes have cut and hurt children, where people have engaged in sexual acts in front of children and more. That area needs help. We need to make sure that for all of our permanent supportive housing sites within our city and county, that rehabilitatories, rehabilitative services, treatment and sobriety are mandatory. Or else we're not actually helping the problem or enabling it. Thank you.
Thank you. Person with the number ending in six, nine, one, zero.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Well, it must be campaign season if Jonathan Fleming's back out. I was calling because I want to know where are the unhoused voices in these proposals? Because it just seems that people are making these proposals and they're not consulting any unhoused voices when they make them. And there should be no proposals about unhoused people without unhoused people's voices in them. And the reason that I say that is when you talk to unhoused folks, they stay where they're from. So if they're living in Willow Glen, they are likely from Willow Glen. They shopped there. They grew up there. They went to church there. They graduated from high school there. If they are in seven, that's where they're from. They went to school there. They graduated there. Their kids probably still live there. It's the same reason. So you can't take people from like all over the city or from like the nice white district that mostly has houses and doesn't want to have homeless people and ship them somewhere else. It doesn't work. So you have to talk to unhoused people and say, hey, if we rounded you all up and shipped you somewhere, would you all want to do that? No. And the reasons for that are multiple. Aside from taking people out of the communities that they're from and that they want to stay in, just like housed people. It's also because you mix Norteño with Serenio, abuser with abusee. And you can't do that. That's why programs fail. But if you don't listen to the voices of the unhoused, you just continue to hurt them. And programs like this will hurt them. And you just can't ship people from neighborhoods that you don't want to maintain their whiteness, to maintain their rightness, to maintain their single family homeless and put them in areas that are brown or just like the homeless people. You can't do that. It's not right.
Thank you. Alex?
Hi, this is Alex Shore, speaking personally today. And there have been a, a lot of proposals by a lot of council members and the mayor over the years to work on these issues and it takes, they say it takes a village, but it also takes a bevy of proposals to solve a housing crisis as big as this one. And thank you to all the staff and advocates in the past who have recommended policies like what Councilmember Mahan is talking about today. We stand on the shoulders as we come up with new proposals on those that have already come forward. I think this is a worthy one of consideration. I hope the Rules Committee will support it. I think Councilmember Mahan and the whole council need to be looking at as many solutions as possible. We do have enough land in this community to house all the people here, but we don't have all that land available for development. And the more land that we can set aside for development, the better to get housing for people. So it takes a variety of solutions. This is a great one from Councilmember Mahan. I don't know if it's brand new in our city because I think we've been talking about this for a while. And there are efforts by public agencies to build housing on their land like VTA. I think this again is a worthy one and I'm very thankful for Rules Committee for considering it. I hope that the entire council will support this as well as continue to support a number of solutions. We need integrated communities throughout San Jose. And it is good that homeless folks, previously homeless folks are living throughout our community. We need to have sites all across the city. I was a little questionable about the local preference question in the memo from Councilmember Mahan, and I, I think it would be good to understand that issue a little bit more before advancing it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Person with the number ending in seven, nine, three, seven.
Yes.
Take yourself off mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Mason Song. Good evening, good afternoon, honorable vice mayor and council members. I just am speaking today in my capacity as a Sunnyvale City Council member and a Santa Clara County resident, not as a member of Councilmember Mahan's staff, which full disclaimer I am. I just wanted to provide perspective on how Sunnyville, Sunnyvale and every other city in Santa Clara County needs to do what this proposal is proposing, which is be a part of the solution and identify sites within our own city to get the job done. And I just wanted to encourage those who have spoken thus far to please read the memo, which i- if you find it, it, it will say that it includes District 10 as one of the districts of consideration for a potential emergency interim housing site. But just to provide perspective really quick, Sunnyville has a shelter that's funded by the county in the north side and that took years to get. And we had a project where we had voucher programs for residents and that money has run out. And we do not actually qualify for most of the funding that San Jose is a large city qualifies for. And so we actually struggle to construct these kind of life moves projects. And so I'm very encouraged that San Jose is taking the lead here and that I hope that Sunnyville and every other city can take, can follow suit. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Gail. Go ahead, Gail.
Good afternoon. Um, I would like to thank Councilmember Mahan for his courage in bringing this forward. I'm talking about the six other council districts that really don't have any kind of encampment, housing, anything for the unhoused. Councilmember Mahan has a wonderful, small, little encampment in District 10. And I brought him there and he has a relationship with some of those people and he understands. Maybe the, the, the fairgrounds isn't the right fit, but putting unhoused in other council districts should be number one. Especially, let's say my district, Council, Council D, D9. I have asked for years to get an encampment, get some land, get a, get a motel, buy a motel, do something. Let's get some unhoused in D9. Also, this is a, a problem that we're seeing coming up real soon with Columbus. I've been going there every day for the last two weeks. People are getting ready to move. They are moving and nobody has listened. Nobody is doing anything to house these folks. And it's a real disaster. What's going to start happening on Monday for the next two weeks? And where are these folks going? Please, can't we get something? You're going to have over 325 people moving into your neighborhoods. And, and I know you don't get it, but you gotta get it. There's no place for them to go. And what Councilman, Councilmember Mahan is proposing, let's get them in some of our other council districts. Thank you so much for letting me talk. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra?
Yes, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you looking at this homeless issue, which is impacting all the districts and the entire county. Let's be clear, it is the main responsibility of the county to work on homelessness and on mental health issues. Using county land to do that in all cities in the county is a better solution than what we have now, which has basically been unworkable and not feasible. While none of us may want homeless next to us, we need to house them and we need to use it on the land that is part of the county. The county is the main responsibility for this. We should not let them off the hook. We should bring this forward for a full discussion at the council. We should be applying pressure to the county to live up to its measure A obligations and they have the funding for this. Please move this forward to the entire council. Thank you so much for your time on working on these very difficult issues.
Thank you. Uh, person with the number ending in eight, three, five, four.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. Um, so I'm a resident in District 7, Lincoln District, and it's really hard to articulate my true intentions without sounding harsh because I am very sympathetic to our unhoused neighbors and I do understand we need to solve this housing crisis. And I would like to appreciate the proposal at hand, but I do have concerns. I am hesitant and I also have strong concerns as a resident of this district, uh, District 7, because we do live very close to the fairgrounds and we already have a very high population of unhoused members in our district. I don't understand why we would put more of these members without proper vetting. And we talk about integration throughout the city, but it always seems that District 7 is always kind of that first one to be thrown into the pot. And just to mention our intersection of Monterey and Curtina. And just to mention, our intersection of Monterey and Kirtner alone has already had three recent deaths, seven this year, six of them being hit and run accidents. And for two of these, two of these fatalities, two of them were unhoused community members. I'm not placing any faults here, but it doesn't seem like a great idea to put even a higher population, more people in close proximity to one of our more dangerous intersections in our city. Thank you for taking time to listen to my concerns today.
Thank you. Person with the number ending in six nine oh seven.
Hi, this is Brian Prescott. I think I had audio issues. Have I already spoken?
You tried to speak and.
Okay, do you mind? Okay, um, is it okay if I talk?
Go ahead.
Okay, yes. So my name is Brian Prescott. I'm a member of South Bay Yimby, and I respectfully urge you to vote yes on this proposal. There's been some concern shared about concentrating new residences for homeless individuals in one place. Perhaps I have an out of date copy of the agenda, but I noticed that it actually specifies the city manager should look for at least six sites and that these should be especially considered in districts that do not currently have a lot of housing for homeless residents. City of San Jose staff do an excellent job of understanding the issues we're dealing with. The bottleneck really comes from, as you've witnessed today, the resistance we have from residents who will push back. It's very difficult to take action because of that kind of pushback. I would like to really commend Councilmember Cohen for his job in setting up a safe RV park for people who were displaced from the Apple property. That kind of courage and leadership is exactly what we need. Mayor Sam really had the right idea when he said that homelessness is an emergency. We need to quit wringing our hands and act like it's an emergency. With that in mind, I ask you to show the same courage and leadership by voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last public speaker, so we're closing public comments. And I'm going to bring it over to Councilmember Mahan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Let me, let me just start by, you know, I want to thank everyone who spoke today in public comment. And I hope you'll stay on for the rest of our discussion. I'm saddened because I think there's a, quite a bit of misinformation that I think has probably been intentionally spread. And I, I am, if it is the case that someone is spreading or organizing a misinformation campaign, I am just very much saddened by that and I'm sorry if you've been lied to in some way. So I am going to take the time to walk through my memo pretty carefully because I think it's important that we are all on the same page about what I'm proposing. And I heard a lot of comments that, that just make me sad because they're not, they're not actually responsive to the memo. So I just encourage everyone to, if you're really concerned, to please look. I want those of you who live in D seven to know that my memo does not suggest creating a, a massive ghetto of homeless housing at the fairgrounds, though the fairgrounds is referenced and I'll explain why. So let me, let me try to give some context. First of all, I want to start by saying that I think, you know, one of the real silver linings of this pandemic is that we have proven through a variety of different bridge housing sites that we built quickly in response to COVID in different districts, that we can build high quality, safe shelter and semi-permanent housing for the homeless. We can do it fast. We can do it at low cost, much lower cost than previous work to build housing for the homeless. That's a real, it's an important learning and it's a real win for our community. And to the comments about understanding the underlying causes and the many different individual needs of the homeless, I appreciate those comments. I spend a fair bit of time out at the encampments in District 10, talking with the residents of encampments. But I think the research shows that we have to get people stably and securely sheltered prior to making real headway on some of those underlying issues. It's very hard to address a lack of employment or maybe an addiction or maybe a mental illness when someone is not stably housed. So we do need to get people into housing first and we need to do that at scale. So we have this proof of concept from the bridge housing sites that we've built. And they're great, but in total, they're only about three hundred units. And the reality is that the number of people living on our streets, I heard a lot of concerns about the homeless and the, the trash and the, the concerns about crime and other, other impacts on our neighborhoods. And that's part of my motivation, in addition to wanting to address the humanitarian crisis that we're seeing on our streets every day. We know that the number of people living on our streets is pretty easily times that, well over six thousand people. So we, we built three hundred of these bridge housing units. We did them fast. We did them cost effectively and they're working. But we need at least twenty times that kind of scale. So fortunately, suddenly what's, what's changed? Well, what's changed is suddenly, not only do we have that proof of concept, but the state has put together and just opened up with Home Key Two, literally billions of dollars statewide for the purpose of building housing, interim shelter, a variety of solutions for addressing. And hopefully, I think what we all want here is to end street homelessness in our community. And the biggest limiting factor is land. To some extent, it's community and political will, of course. It's really hard to accept the idea that we might build these in our neighborhoods. I understand that. But, but the biggest limiting factor has been where are we going to build them, which is really the subject of, of my memo. Something that gives me hope on the, on the community will side is as I talked to residents in District 10, you know, we're exploring building to, again, to some of the public comments, we're actually going through the process right now of exploring building the largest of these bridge housing sites in the city in District 10. It would be by far the largest, not just another site, but double the size of any that have been built yet. I just want to be really clear about that. We also have two affordable housing sites in District 10 currently under construction along Blossom Hill Road. And we're in conversation with VTA about two additional housing developments that would include affordable housing in District 10. So we're currently talking about five projects just in District 10. And I understand historically Districts Three, Districts Seven and District Six have, you know, do host a disproportionate share of affordable and supportive housing. That's, that's certainly true and I'm not disagreeing with that. And I'll get to that in a moment as well. But what I'm hearing from residents, and I think probably most of us are hearing, is that the frustration with encampments and the challenges of having six thousand, seven thousand plus people living on our streets are so that the frustration level is so high that I think people are open to and ready for solutions, even if they're imperfect. So what does my memo do? And I want to be really clear about this because I heard a lot of public comment today that doesn't seem to refer to my memo. It directs the city manager to first and foremost, come back by the end of the year with six sites in our city, prioritizing the six districts, including mine in District 10, that do not have a recent bridge or interim emergency interim housing site constructed. And to work with the county to look at lands countywide. There is no way that San Jose alone with city land or that San Jose with city and county land, land just within our city boundaries can or should solve this problem. This has to be a distributed countywide effort. I want to be really clear. I'm going to repeat that because of the many comments in public comment. It has to be a distributed countywide effort, including in the six districts that thus far have not built one of these, one of these sites. So part of what is really important to remember is the urgency of the state funding that's available. We have a once in a lifetime opportunity to build in a distributed way across our county, thousands of these quick build, cost effective, but safe, secure, high quality bridge housing sites to have a huge impact on street homelessness, to be on the path to potentially one day ending street homelessness in our community. But that state funding is available now and it is first come, first served. So this is why I'm pushing to take all the work we've done to identify sites in the past, which is great, but still not comprehensive, include county lands, include other agencies like Caltrans. I've been working with our Public Works team to do GIS analysis of Caltrans land that we have not looked at yet. To take all of that land and to find our partners, find our best sites and get in applications now to secure the state funding so that our county gets the money needed to build the bridge housing and it doesn't just all go to other counties that move faster. So let me in closing, I know I'm going all along here, but I want to just touch on a couple of other items that have come up because they're, they're in the memo and they're relevant to the public comment and other concerns I've heard. On the point about the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds is listed in the third recommendation as a site for which I ask the county about feasibility. And I very explicitly say that one, we should not concentrate the problem at the fairgrounds or concentrate the solution, I mean, at the fairgrounds. And that if the county executive feels that the county has plans for other uses of the fairgrounds that would be better for the community, which I would very much support, then please offer up some other land. Please identify some other land in the county that could be utilized for these purposes. So there's no suggestion that the fairgrounds is the only site or the best site or the, it's just, it is a lot of land. I do say for, for purposes of illustration, that we could end street homelessness in our community with about fifty acres countywide. Now, the fairgrounds has a hundred and fifty acres. That was not meant to imply that all fifty acres should be at the fairgrounds. So I apologize if that was not clear, but I want to make that crystal clear now. I'm not suggesting a fifty acre bridge housing site at the county fairgrounds. In fact, it may very well be the case that the county has other better plans for those, for that land. And if so, I will be very happy as long as the county helps us identify other land. The county is the largest landowner in the county and there's no way to solve this problem without the county offering land in addition to the many supportive services that they are responsible for as the primary provider of human services in our county. Last two points here. On operating costs, I know this came up in a staff evaluation. I think one of the biggest misunderstandings here is that this form of housing is some sort of flimsy temporary housing and that we're just going to build a bunch of it and not, not be able to maintain it or operate it. We can build with prefab modular units, housing that is high enough quality with, with in suite bathrooms, with, with storage, with in suite sinks. These can be high quality enough to be eligible for federal vouchers, which can fund ongoing operations of these sites. And I am quite confident that the state is not going to make billions of dollars available to us this year to build these sites and then not be able to come up with the hundreds of millions of dollars it would take next year to operate them. What we have right now is an opportunity, if we move quickly and decisively in partnership with the county and nonprofit service providers, to identify the land, get in the applications, secure the funds, buy the modular prefab units and get the capacity built out on sites across the county. And there's work being done right now at the county. I think you'll probably hear some news on this the next day or two that is right in line with this, identifying sites in other places. So this is all, this is a timely effort to take advantage of this one time opportunity with the amount, the incredible amount of funding that's available. And I don't think we have time to wait for years to figure out the perfect solution or the staff capacity to do it. This is our, this is our shot. Finally, on the point of local preference, because I think it speaks to something that we need to, we need to think more about and I think is responsive to many of the concerns we heard from the public today. It is true that there are some restrictions on who we can give preference to based on the funding sources we use to build these sites. But the spirit of the local preference is simply this. The neighborhoods, and I mean that plural, not one, the neighborhoods, including those in District 10, that take on these sites ought to see the benefits as well. This is about taking encampments and street homelessness and the dire conditions people are living in and the really negative impacts on the local neighborhoods and community and the local ecology or creeks in particular. And it's about building an alternative and ensuring that folks have that opportunity to transition out of encampments and into stable, safe shelter. And those neighborhoods ought to see the benefits. And I understand there are restrictions. What I'm asking staff to do is to be creative about figuring out the investments in homeless outreach, supportive services, security, beautification, to ensure that the neighborhoods that take on what will be perceived as the burden of bridge housing see some of the benefit and, and, and understand that, that, that they're being part of a solution and that it's working. The public needs to see that these sites actually are working and can enhance our collective quality of life. So I appreciate my colleagues giving me the time to lay that out. I felt the need after the incredible amount of misinformation that seems to have been pushed out and seemingly organized today to lay out what the memo actually does and try to set the record straight. So with that, I will turn it back to the chair and I appreciate everyone's time and consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahan. Councilmember Prawlus?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I will say I do appreciate Councilmember Mahan explicitly calling out the need to have his own district be prioritized in one of the next emergency interim housing sites that we can roll out. I don't necessarily think it was too wise to call out another district, specifically a non-city owned parcel as a solution. And I think that's likely why there was some, some fear and anxiety from individuals that called in that I, you know, I recognize, may not be fully aware of what the intent there was simply because it's not coming from, I think, number one, a county official, but number two, someone representative of, of their community. I would say that, you know, the effort to address a crisis such as homelessness with the magnitude of homelessness, it's, it's like a marathon race. It's a marathon race or several marathon races with a relay team. And we are participants in that, along with a lot of other stakeholders that are working to end homelessness. And, and I've been a part of that now for the last six and a half years. But this is a crisis that has been ongoing for decades and, and really growing over the last decade. I do recognize Councilmember Mahan, in being new, doesn't have the benefit of being or having been present for all the conversations that I have and other colleagues here have been a part of. And, and I see that that was recognized in the early consideration response from staff as they indicated that in fact, what Councilmember Mahan is asking for is being done today, has been prioritized previously. And I know that personally because much of the work that has been done has come from directives that I have either led or signed on to dating back to as early as my initial terms on the council, but specifically from the work that Councilmember Mahan is directing from memorandums in two thousand and seventeen, reinitiated or reemphasized with some directions from Councilman Jimenez in, in April of last year as staff indicated in their early response form, some updates on the sites through a staff presentation last year in, in April. But again, it's, it's, it's maybe not to the benefit of Councilmember Mahan for not being a part of those, I think, to, to not be fully aware of where some of the work that we're already doing is, is coming from and where we want to move forward with it. I do want to ask staff, based on your early consideration form there, is that the, the correct reading of what you have put forward that, that what work Councilmember Mahan is, is directing is actually indeed already being done?
That is our interpretation, Councilmember, which is why it's green. And so there's a little bit different information and request here that we need to fold into that work stream, but that is stuff that we can bring forward before the end of the year.
And can you be specific about what is slightly different from that, the current work stream that we're already approved to, to, to be working under?
Yeah, I would ask Reagan to jump in there, but I think some of it, obviously we've, and Reagan knows this, have, I would say pounded the pavement in speaking to other public agencies about additional sites. That's been a very long conversation and quite frankly, quite complex. So I think there's this additional specificity in here related to that, that we need to follow up on. And then at least in, in some of the verbal comments right now about additional analysis possibly around funding streams and new money and new types of projects that I know that we are analyzing and that haven't done, but it sounds like. um and that haven't done, but it it sounds like uh Councilmember Mayhan might have something more specific that we need to look at there as well.
I mean, I'd be happy to chime in, Chair. What what's the order here?
If it's okay with Councilmember Prawlus, uh do you want to finish Councilmember Prawlus or you want Councilmember Mayhan to chime in?
I I wanted to hear uh, as I think Lee pointed out Reagan's response first, maybe to what um I think our our staff would know specifically what might be new work and what might not. So I'd like to hear from her first on on the specifics of that.
Thanks, Councilmember Reagan Henninger with the Housing Department. So we did uh back in twenty sixteen, maybe, we asked county um and the Water District for available sites uh for our bridge housing communities. And they uh did not have sites available. If we wanted a more extensive analysis um around site feasibility, um if we were to get new sites, we do have an existing list of city sites that we could relatively quickly bring back. Um, I don't think that list, that existing list will yield six more sites. I'm I'm certain of it. Um, if we wanted to do and then more extensive feasibility analysis um determining viability of a site, it would require more staff effort. If we wanted to look at pre-development work or engineering work that would for sites that would take more staff time that we don't have.
So if if that were the case, so outside of what work you're already doing, which for the most part, I think is 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 what's being asked here, you're saying if we were to to try to dive further, then it wouldn't be a green light response? As I I think that's what the the early consideration form kind of denoted too, right? That if it if um if indeed it went further, that that's not necessarily, you you would need staff resources, right? You would need, you would need more.
That is correct. Reagan is absolutely correct. So I mean, I we do have the existing list and and obviously we can go back out to the other public agencies and ask again. A lot has happened um since we lasted that. And the feasibility can definitely, you know, the high level, high level feasibility um is fairly straightforward and um, you know, housing, Office of Economic Development, real estate, City Manager's Office can do that work. Um, however, if it's getting into viability, we, you know, with engineering, the pre-development work um on all of these sites before we come back to council, um that would be different. So I think with the forum, what we're trying to do is say the feasibility work can happen and we can bring that forward. And then have a more substantial conversation with the council because resources would be involved, I guess.
Okay, so the feasibility sounds like it's, uh would that be new work then? Or is it just?
Again, and to the agencies, I mean, I would say Reagan and her team as well as Nancy in real estate, they're in ongoing conversations with agencies all the time. Um, and and obviously the the memorandum here contemplates something much more official, I would say, from our city manager to the county executive, which we will um, we're also prepared to do um and work through. Um, so I would say to, you know, a lot of additional work. It's it's stuff that's in our existing work stream that we can pivot on and do and still come back before the end of the year. Absolutely.
Okay, and then happy to hear Councilman Mayhan uh if you wanted to to respond.
Yeah, thank you. I I I would love to chime in. I um you know, appreciate that I'm new to the council, but I I don't particularly appreciate the suggestion that I don't know what I'm talking about because I'm new here. I've spent quite a bit of time talking to staff uh about the past research done. I'm well aware of it. I've been through the lists. The lists are incomplete. I've worked with Public Works on GIS analysis for Caltrans land that had not been considered until this year. County lands have not been considered on the list I received. I went, I vetted this memo through the city manager's office. And my request is not for long lists. In fact, you know, it's interesting, the site that we're preparing to build on in District Ten isn't even on the city's list. So it is, it is an incomplete list and I am asking for more work, but I'm not asking for, you know, lists of hundreds of sites. I'm very specifically asking that the city manager come back before the end of the year with at least six sites that we can move forward on so that we can submit applications for product, for home key. And I think the council probably ought to do an up or up or down vote on all the sites together. But I'm I am not asking for redundant analysis. I'm asking us to take all the past work we've done, which we have added to this year. And which more could be added and we should discuss what is the staff cost and what's the potential trade off. I personally am not willing to miss the opportunity to apply for home key funds given the sum of money that is first come, first served and it's new money. So I just, I I don't agree that it's all been done and we have all the answers. I think we need to take the research we've done. There's, we can do endless research. There are plenty of gaps in it. I'd like us to identify six sites and then have a discussion about whether or not we're gonna apply for those six sites. Because we just, we need to stop going around in circles. We need to identify sites to get a scale. Find the partners and put in the applications. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, thank you. And uh I never said you you uh um, you know, that you you didn't know what you were talking about here. Uh, that was not my my intent. Um, what I said was you don't know everything uh and that that's expected because this is really a large body of work. Um, and you know, uh whether it's quick analysis or conversations, it's really impossible for me included, even being involved in this work for six and a half years, to really know everything and and know the answers moving forward. And as you've seen from the staff response. Um, in large part, what you're asking for has been asked for and it is being done. Um, I don't think we need a direction to actually allow you or any other uh council district that's currently not hosting an EIH uh EA EIH site to host one. We've actually had that commitment, your predecessor uh committed to it along with me and the rest of the council on each council district hosting such a site. Uh, unfortunately, uh we're now many years down the road and we haven't gotten there, which is why I I started off, you know, appreciating the fact that you're willing to step up and say, hey, that's, that's something that you want to do. Um, but we don't necessarily need a direction, I think at the council, for you to do that, or quite frankly, anybody else in the council. Um, I I would agree, and I do think it's it's wise to not, you know, consider lists that we've had for a number of years to be uh thorough and complete, that we want to go back and reevaluate our, you know, are the list of sites that we're currently running off of that hundred sites that we uh spent a lot of time and staff spent a lot of energy compiling uh several years ago. That somehow that is exhaustive. I think we knew that at that point. We were looking for uh the best and and easiest sites that we could work with. And even even in that, we, what we determined was that there were a lot of those sites that had a number of challenges or infeasibilities due to one thing or another. And ultimately, we've continued to move down that path and as staff brought forward options last year on the the best sites to move forward on. Uh, given the fact that we had to move expeditiously, that's what we have done. Um, but I don't think that uh what necessarily you're you're asking for uh is is going to to move that needle much further. In fact, I do think it would really, um, we would be analyzing a a number of sites or other age, asking other agencies to analyze more sites, especially in other agencies where we don't control that jurisdiction. Um, where we may not come up with uh too many more fruits for our for our labors there uh versus, I think let's act on what we can today. If you have sites in your district, I think that is amazing and I I appreciate you being willing to move forward on those. Uh, I would not necessarily support your third request there that we uh have a direct uh and and specific advocacy in regards to uh parcel of land that is not owned by the city, one that we have had conversations with the county numerous times that we recognize is not in our jurisdiction, that actually is today. Um, it is hosting some interim um emergency housing sites there uh in in or uh unhoused individuals. And uh it is doing so, but at the same time, we recognize we're 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 really uh spinning our wheels there with the county because of the responses that we have heard um year over year on on the plans that they have for the area. Not to mention, I don't necessarily agree just because it's a large swath of land um that we should be looking for uh large scale, which that that is, that is terminology directly from your memo. And so I can understand why community members maybe took that to believe, uh you know, there wasn't an exact number associated to it. Um, so I think the determinant of itself to me as well um was was alarming because large scale uh as we know, is is not necessarily the best solution when we are housing individuals of high need. Uh, and we've seen that unfortunately play out in some of the solutions that we've had to date. Um, actually, smaller scale or more manageable scale um and and specifically uh in and around the sixty to eighty, but definitely less than a hundred range. Um, is is something that that has proven to be more successful as we look at the uh the the other cities around the country that have engaged down some of these efforts. And when we look at some of our own efforts here in the the city of San Jose. So if uh and the question for staff, if um we were to move forward with the more extensive analysis, essentially, let's say updating the list of sites, uh not only city sites, but then um o- other public agencies, county, uh Caltrans, uh BTA, if we were to look at that, what would the uh based on the 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 early response memo you have, what would that look like? What would your response be if that is indeed what we're asking to to do? Is that something that's still greenlit or or what is response?
Yeah, yeah, Reagan, please go.
Um, I I would say again, if if we're wanting a more extensive an- analysis of multiple sites and their viability for construction, we would need more staff resources.
Okay, which, and then in that case, the conversation is more relevant for priority setting next year.
I wouldn't say priority setting. I think uh when it comes to resources, I think it's more roadmap or or really the budget process. But I I think your question, did you ask about viability or did you ask kind of within how we wrote um the green light, what our approach would be? Because if it is viability, yes, that's a different conversation, but I think, you know, we do routinely bring policy proposals or or list or ideas, um scrub them with you and then go do more work. So again, if it is the existing list um and reaching out to other agencies for for additional capacity and bringing those to you, that part, you know, can be done by the end of the year. And and that's what I believe the request was. Um, that's what we would believe the request was, which is why it was a green light. But we did want to clarify for rules and set the expectation on what that analysis would be, that it's feasibility, not viability.
Okay, and I I I I think I'm confused as well, because I think with what you're saying then, I'm comfortable with that, especially if staff is saying, hey, we can go and scrub that list and and see if we can't update, but that doing much more extensive work um would require more, obviously more resources, more staff time. Um, and so I'll ask Councilman Mayhan maybe to clarify what it is that that he, if, you know, what he'd like to to see staff do.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I um, I think it would be a real mistake to say that our approach is to wait for individual council members to identify one-off sites individually and bring them forward individually and continue with a piecemeal approach. Uh, what I'm suggesting is that the city manager be directed to come back by the end of the year with six sites for which we will apply for home key. And that can include, that's where the request to other public agencies for potential sites comes in. It's also a timing issue. These home key funds are gonna disappear and we're gonna miss our opportunity. So I am explicitly arguing against waiting on individual council members or waiting for priority setting. I think we ought to, we have done the, we've done a lot of analysis. There may be a little more that's required. I'm I'm just focused on the outcome. I would like the city manager, and I hope the council will support this, to come back by the end of the year to say the, and and if we want to change six sites to five or ten, or we want to say a thousand units, I'm open. Uh, it's about an outcome. Let's identify the next tranche that we're gonna apply for so that we get to some scale and speed, so we have a shot at starting to turn or turn the corner on our street homelessness crisis. It's not about building more lists. It's about the outcome. What are we gonna apply to home key for? Or are we gonna miss, are we just gonna miss it and let let other cities address their street homelessness crisis? That's kind of where I'm at on this. I hope that's clear.
Okay, yeah, no, I I think I think it's clear. I think um I'll let housing staff speak for themselves, but I think that's already what they're doing. So Reagan, is is that not?
That is not what I was, that's not what I've been told.
I really uh would just want to clarify the home key um application. So we are working and have been working very diligently over the summer on our home key application. We plan on submitting five projects. Uh, four of them are hotels and one is an EIH site. I should clarify that Home Key is designed for and prioritizes hotel motel acquisition. That EIH sites uh are actually a second tier priority in the home key application. Even with our five sites that we're applying to, um we think our our region, which gets about two hundred million for home key sites, just San Jose's application alone with our five existing sites, uh we think the home key funds will be oversubscribed. I think Nancy, you wanted to say something. I think you're muted.
Just as a simple uh response though, because I do recognize we're pushing up against five o'clock here, which um I I so I I believe from what Councilman Mayhan stated, he'd like to see his outcome, it just uh, it sounds like we're, we are doing that. That is fully your intent within housing to take advantage of these funds based on the information we have today. And that quite frankly, I think that although I I would agree, there maybe is some value to the analysis he's asking for, I don't think that's actually gonna help you to achieve the goal of utilizing uh the state resources that they have today and that you will absolutely, you're doing that now and that that we have, we should have confidence that you're going to take advantage of that. We're not gonna be somehow missing out, as Councilman Mayhan states, to other cities.
As far as I can glean, we are submitting the most applications so far in our region.
Okay, thank you. So I I appreciate it and I I I recognize again that the time, so I will uh I will will rest for my other colleagues to speak, but um I I'm I'm not gonna be able to to support this direction. I'm I'm happy to I think, look at this, if Councilman Mayhan wants to wants to retool what it is that, you know, he's he's looking for, and if indeed it's gonna be asking for an update to that list that can help us for future projects, um I think that's something maybe um worthwhile to do. Uh, the local preference, as we saw in the early response form, does already exist. Um, and I think our, I have confidence our housing staff is already set out to do exactly what, as he's asked for, really, it's the outcome. That's exactly the outcome that they're they're striving to do now. We will be taking advantage of the state's funding uh on the short timeline that we have now, and I look forward to those projects and programs coming in front of the council.
Reagan, you said we're applying for one EIH site for this round.
That's right.
And what I've discussed with city staff is being in a position by early next year to apply for more than that with whatever the next round of home key looks like. Do we know what the timing is for the next?
If there is another home key application next year,
Yep.
Um, we could take, you know, certainly be working on future EIH sites now, as you say, Councilmember.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we, that's what I discussed with the city manager's office when putting together the memo. So I'm a little confused that we're saying we're already doing this. I mean, we, I understand the preference for hotels and motels. The memo's not about that. I'm talking about the bridge housing sites where we have a proof of concept and lining up the work now and reaching out to other public agencies. So we're in a position for the next round to apply for what I think ought to be at least a half dozen sites.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to clarify, Councilmember, that there are two years of applications, right? So we are going forward full speed ahead this year with five projects, five sites and
I'm talking about getting ahead for the next round.
We will not be missing future opportunities either.
Thank you, Reagan, and Councilmember Mayhan. I actually um was starting to get up against the clock, so I need to get the other council members to to have their voices heard. So Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Um, from my understanding, uh Reagan, I really appreciate your discussing what the home key funding was, because my understanding was that home key, like Home Key, like the whole key thing, it was a changeover from room key to home keys, so it was about hotels. So I appreciate that. Um, and I just want to say. You you know, Councilmember Mayhan, when we, when we say you're new, we're not saying you don't know anything. We're not saying. We're not saying you don't have anything to add. We're trying to give you um a perspective that maybe. We've been through it a little bit and we've been in the trenches. So when you're saying you're asking for a list. We've been through that and and um. That list got publicized and there were about, I think it was ninety-nine. For some reason, I think the number was ninety-nine sites that was listed and. The community exploded. And. We ended up not really getting much out of that, but since then. So that's why I think I I as soon as I see a list of sites, I I immediately. I tense up and I think. Is that really going to do any good? We already have. Mayberry Bridge Housing Community, Felipe Bridge Housing Community, Monterey Upper Now, Rue Ferrari Emergency Interim, Evans Lane Emergency. Housing, those all all told are close to four hundred um beds or people. And the Guadalupe Emergency Interim Housing, which is the Lot E site, which I think is coming to us soon. It would add another seventy-six, so that takes us. To almost five hundred. And and I'm not saying that's enough at all, but I am saying that. I know from experience for my own site that's in there. So we've got. In this list, there are two in D three, one in D six, two in D two and one in D seven. And I I totally and completely agree that the other six districts need sites. From my experience and I would, I would guess that Councilmember Paulus would say the same thing. It really does take the council member to have leadership in their district to talk about the site or sites. And to have, to have this driven by staff is actually. I would, I would venture to say it was counterproductive when it happened before, because everybody went crazy about. Now there's going to be homeless sites in my neighborhood and I haven't had any input. What what we did instead for for my site is we've, we had this discussion for, frankly, it was multiple years. Um, to talk about what it would look like. And it looked different from what the proposal was before I was a council member to what we ended up with. I'm not saying every conversation has to take years, but it does take the leadership of the council office. And I know that housing has worked differently since then with each individual council office when they identify a site. And they've also listened to. Me as a council member, I'm sure others, I know they're working with you on sites that you said that weren't on the list, that. Having that dialogue with housing is much more productive and bringing your neighbors in as you see fit. Is a much more productive way to to get this housing. I would feel much more comfortable if that discussion was about. Directing staff to discuss with the council members and to come up with. To jointly come up with sites than to just say, staff, go off and do this work and then publish a list that. Frankly, is just going to make the community explode and and set us back steps. That we've already gone forward with our community about, we're not going to do these things without you. We're going to bring you along. You will be included in the process. That's the part that really gave me pause. In addition to. Bringing up the fairgrounds again, I honestly, I feel like it's a red herring. If the if the. County was going to do more on that site, they would have already done it. All that said. I'd like to hear from you Reagan or Lee about the community plan and homelessness and what the discussions are at the county. And and with other agencies on the different strategies, including. I think it's strategy three, which is our home key and our interim housing sites. Is that correct? What's the discussion and how has that been developing?
Sure, the the. Discussions have been. You know, we're, we're trying to balance very important priorities and our first and foremost priority is building permanent. Deeply affordable housing, yet at the same time, we know. There are thousands of people on the streets suffering right now, and so our community plan also calls for doubling the amount of. Crisis response or emergency shelter type. Uh, beds, whether that's emergency interim housing, tiny homes, safe parking, shelter beds, it's all. Uh, countable. So our goal. Is adding about two thousand more. Emergency type beds or emergency interim housing. I think once. Once and San Jose, I think we are fine committing to. About a thousand of that since we are obviously the biggest city in the county. But we have thought about, once we go over. That and overextend on. Emergency. Programs or emergency interim housing, then we may start to eat into the funding that we have. For the real solution, which is permanent affordable housing. Um, so we've really been trying to strike a balance. Um, with staying the course of prioritizing and building. Permanent deeply affordable housing, but also, yes, we do want to build, you know, these more emergency interim housing. Communities, but again, it has to be a balance. And we need to pay for emergency interim housing services and operations and. We do not have an ongoing funding source identified.
And the the federal funds um that are, the federal funds that are being talked about now, is that just for? Kind of the hardware, not the software of the services?
So as of now, there's no, there are not vouchers available for emergency interim housing. The way we are constructing them, we are building them to meet. Housing quality standards so that in the future, if they, if vouchers become available. We would obviously want to utilize them, but right now. Uh, and for the. Foreseeable future, there are not any vouchers available.
Okay, and do you have, I I guess. We, the local preference um aspect of this is something that we're already doing for the sites that we fund. Ourselves, correct?
That's correct. So uh, we already offer a local preference for our emergency or crisis response programs. Our safe parking programs, our overnight warming locations. Our bridge housing communities and our emergency interim housing communities. Uh, they all act like emergency shelter. An emergency shelter does not. It is not operate from a coordinated entry system. Uh, where we're taking the most vulnerable who are prioritized. So we do do that already for those sites.
Okay.
It is when you get into projects like permanent supportive housing that are funded by hedge funds or vouchers. Where we do not. It's been more complicated to offer a local preference.
Right, understood. Um, and in terms of asking other agencies about their sites. I I assume you don't need a motion to do that. That's just something that you're. Going to do.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that was, I mean, I I know the the Monterey Upper Now and the Rue Ferrari weren't originally on on the list and. We talked about them during the pandemic. They were sites that came up. And now that we've had, we have sites on Caltrans property. Caltrans has seen what we've done. They may be more. More willing to to sign additional MOUs. So I think it's, I think it's worth having those conversations, but it's probably worth having those conversations. With our representatives um as opposed to Caltrans specifically. And again, I would, I would say, you know. Including the council members for those sites would would probably be helpful in. Because I know when we ask the water district what sites they have available, their answer, I know what their answer is. Their answer is, we don't have any. And and that's not necessarily. True when you talk about, well, what about this individual site? Can we start there? So I think. Having that discussion about, hey, can you give us a list is not as as is not as productive as. A council member talk, as you have done, Councilmember Mayhan, talking about specific sites and saying, hey. What about this one, that one, or this other? And then and then bringing it to staff. The the flip side doesn't work, asking Caltrans that there or asking other agencies, their answer is. You know, the easy answer is to to say we don't have anything, because then it doesn't cost them any time. Um, so I think it has to go the other, the other way around, and I really do think it takes. The leadership of the council members to. To do that. So I I I. Appreciate all the work that.
I don't disagree with that. I I as was, I don't disagree with that. I I really, I think there's nothing in my memo that would preclude the city manager from working with each of those council members on potential sites. I'm I'm simply trying to make sure we line up. Viable applications for early next year.
Yeah, and I and I think that, you know, they're they're feverishly working on this year's applications and they're. They've already said that they'll, they don't need a motion to to go through those lists and. Um, and to ask other agencies and and I know that working with the council offices is is what you do. Um, Reagan, and I get texts from Jackie about specific questions frequently. So um, I don't, I don't feel like there's, there's a need for a motion on on this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aris, go ahead.
Thank you. Um. I'm one of the, uh, I represent a district that does not have, and that I'm not proud of. And I've acknowledged this in past years, as we've been having conversations with the housing department to determine where else. Can we place um? Emergency interim housing. And um, as well as, you know, I don't have any affordable housing, transitional housing. Um, I think I have one, one site. And um, the rest of my district um creates naturally occurring affordable housing, which typically looks like. Three families per a single family home. Which is not, is not optimal, but that's what people are doing. If I recall collect correctly, I think from the last time that that we had received some information from the county, and this is something that I have. Asked before or made points on it is that. A lot of the times we don't see the people um that are most um vulnerable, and that is our children. And they're usually accompanied by women. And I know that from uh past um county information, I think it was fifty-one percent that with of of women who are homeless. There's fifty-one percent. And of that fifty-one percent. Forty-one percent of them have minors in their care. And so for me, I've always um pushed and you'll always hear me pushing for. Uh, a family centered approach. We learned our lessons with um. Safe parking for families, actually um in D seven. And something that I I prompted and I propelled with the housing department so that we could answer the call. Um, it didn't work out. I I got pushed back from the community and rightly so. Because that area is already um prolific with um. Litter and crime and just overburdening and under-resourced um. From fire, police, nonprofits, you got it uh there under-resourced. And so I I, you know, I didn't like it because I wanted to offer something for our families, but I understood. That families need something quite different. And so. When I met with the housing department, when I met with Jackie and Reagan. You all uh offered hotels as the alternative. And this is what families are asking for anyways. It came from them. Um, and you have your ear to the ground in terms of what um our homeless population needs. And so this is actually. Um, something that I've been focused on and I've asked you the last time that we, excuse me, the last time that um this came to council. If we were going to. Sorry, I'm running out of battery and um I'm trying to get to an outlet before it. It kicks me off. Okay, thank you. Um, and so we we shifted um. We shifted our focus and and um had a little bit more um. Target in terms of what we could offer families as vouchers for for hotels. And this Home Key for me um is is an additional resource for those families. That is a priority. And from what I understand, talking with Jackie. And chairing the Neighborhood Services um and Education Committee, I know that the. EIH is secondary. Primary is is really getting people into somewhere. Building something at this point is not going to get us out of um the water that we're in. And so. I'm wondering. What what message did you get? Um, first of all, did you meet with Jackie and what message did Jackie? I don't see Jackie here. I think she's not available. And so what what was a message that?
You asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, Jackie and I had a very long, over an hour-long conversation about bridge housing and I I think. I think both of our views are probably evolving and we we don't totally agree about how um. High quality or permanent bridge housing can be. Um, I think that, I think that with prefabricated modular, um, the units we're seeing are of pretty high quality and can be suitable. For longer term stay and for eventually applying for federal vouchers and. Um, and I think they can be stacked and I I just, I think they can be at least semi-permanent. Um, and I I I think she and I don't totally agree on maybe on all those points, although I think I would say I I don't want to speak for her. I mean, I think we had a really good conversation. But, you know, I certainly learned things from her and and I also, there's some areas where we where we don't totally agree. Which I think is healthy, honestly. I think it's okay.
Councilmember, uh, listen, and the reason I shared my experience was because I also, you know, I got a hard stop. This isn't working, you're, you know, uh, D seven is already very overwhelmed. I didn't like that message necessarily, um, because I'm trying to solve for something that I see as a problem. But I also understand that there is inequities in terms of housing among um the different districts. And I know that our our housing department is working on a a citing policy and I know that it has more reference to do with. Affordable housing and market um rate housing, but but at the at the. Core of that is distinguishing re-rich um resource neighborhoods. And so along with that. With that, if we, if we guide our conversations with our and and in parallel to the. Citing policy, we have to take a look at where is there a re-a rich resource neighborhood? And these are probably the more target, the, these are the areas that um make sense for our community according to research. According to our housing department. And so. For me, I I think it's always healthy to have a difference of opinion. I have quite a bit of difference of opinions with my colleagues. All the time. And uh, we get through it. Yeah, but but in the end, I know that we all want the same thing. And we and we want to propose it in a, and we want to propose our solutions in different ways. Um, it, for me, it didn't feel good at all to get pushed back on my safe uh parking uh project, but. I understood that there's a bigger uh target here and there's a bigger um goal, and that is to um comply with what. Our families actually need. And so. Um, from what I understand and from what I heard from Reagan and what I've talked with uh Jackie in the past. Home Key is set for hotels and I'm going to support that, continue to support that. I think it's too late at this point anyways, and so the next conversation would be next year. And I don't want to preempt the council on the conversation in terms of. May- maybe, maybe we, I I don't know what our strategy will be. Um, and I don't want this, this committee to decide for the rest of the council what uh that Home Key uh funding. Strategy or proposal will look like, so. So I also am not going to support this. We need immediate housing. We also, more importantly, need to prevent, people from being unhoused. And so getting the word out about the state funding and rental assistance and legal assistance is to, for me, the utmost, um, priority. And I will follow typically, generally, um, I don't want to see a show of hands, but I typically follow a default to what our department heads, um, outline. I may not always agree with them, but I, here in this housing department, I have, uh, put my faith into our housing department, uh, because they understand what our community is and they, um, are responding to it in the moment, really in the moment. And they've grown, they've grown from when I first started, um, it was all, the focus was all just development and not really circus oriented. And, and this is a completely different housing department than when I first started. And so we are partners i- in addressing this crisis. We're not, we're not the only partners and they know this. And so we play a part. And our part right now is to prevent homelessness, um, with some of these rental assistance vouchers. Our priority is, is to, um, have immediate housing for our folks who are unhoused. And, uh, I'm, I'm going to also ask that in the future, we, we need to know, the roles committee needs to know that this is, this has been vetted with the department head. And Lee, I, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that this was. And so I think for the next, um, uh, proposal or project or memo that comes in, I really like to see more vetting from our, that particular department head. Because it, it, it would save us from some time and then allow for a direct conversation with the council member and that, um, director. So I appreciate, uh, the, the, the memo, I appreciate the efforts. And, uh, and I know we, we're all trying, we're all on the same team. And we're all trying to support our community in, in the very different ways. Um, and so I appreciate the memo, appreciate the efforts. I, I will not be able to support it at this point. And so if, if there isn't a motion, I, I'm guessing we don't have to vote on this, um, vice mayor.
No, we wouldn't vote if there's no motion. So, um, are, are you finished, uh, council member Oras?
I have 10 more minutes, no, I'm kidding. I am done, done.
All right. Council member Mayhem, obviously you can, you've gathered the sentiment for the committee. And I can imagine it's, you know, very disappointing. A couple of points I want to make, and I want to reiterate what my colleagues already said is that, you know, it's no disrespect, you know, when we, you know, when we say that you're new, we're not questioning your, your intelligence or your experience or anything else. But for, for, for those of us who've been on, on the council from, you know, Raul and I, you know, over six and a half years. And we've been tackling this issue from our first day on the council. And the proposals that you brought forward, I understand exactly where you're coming from and what you're trying to accomplish. Those very same proposals are proposals that we've been dealing with and working on and trying to resolve. The whole time I've been on the council and the whole time Raul's been on the council. So I just want to just kind of give you that context, uh, where some of this might be coming from. And, um, and also I, I appreciate again, you know, what you're trying to accomplish. But I, I've worked, you know, closely with Jackie and Reagan and, you know, they have a lot of battle scars. Each project, each site is very intense. You need to have, you know, a lot of community engagement. You need to have a process where the council member that's going to be affected is on board, is helping drive the process. But if you have a situation where you just produce a list of sites, uh, again, we've seen this movie before, we know how it ends and it doesn't end well. I, I, again, appreciate what you're, you're trying to accomplish. And, you know, I take a, a position normally of supporting, uh, my council members' memos, at least to go to the council, even if I don't specifically support their, um, proposal. At least go to the council for a further discussion. Uh, unfortunately for this particular issue, you don't have, uh, a motion or the votes to, to make that happen. But I don't want you to get discouraged, you know, continue to work on this process, you know, work closely with housing, you know, collaborate with your colleagues who have been through this and, and try to figure out, you know, a, a, a different path or a better path or refined path forward. So that's my, that's my input and advice to you, uh, council member.
Yeah, thank you, vice mayor. No, totally appreciate it. And I'm, I'm, believe me, I'm, I'm not, while disappointed, I'm not taking any of this personally. I appreciate the feedback. My, my observation is that the way we're approaching this is, is not sufficient to the scale of the problem. And I will, I will stand by my memo as actually slightly different approach. I'm not sure I articulated it clearly enough in the memo, but I, I am, I am trying to find a way to have us operate at a different level of speed and scale and cost effectiveness to have a shot at ending street homelessness. And sadly, I think the approach we're taking is not, is, isn't there. And I'm very open to collaboration. I appreciate all the feedback, totally respect the concerns that have been raised today. Hope, uh, hope we can together find other approaches or other solutions. But I, I just, I am very much not satisfied with the trajectory that we're on. And I'm looking for a way to get greater speed and scale. I don't think in any way that precludes the city manager's office, even if taking a more top-down approach or a more comprehensive approach, uh, precludes, uh, city manager from working with individual council members on individual sites or to choose between a few options in a given district. But I, I, I'm going to continue to push for scale and speed and cost effectiveness. And I think our current approach simply doesn't meet that bar for me. So I'm going to, I'm going to continue to try to make that case and show where I think we could be doing better. But I, I do appreciate the feedback and I appreciate the feedback I've gotten from staff on these issues throughout the year as I've been looking into the past work we've done and, and where we're at. And, uh, look forward to continuing the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. So there was no motion, so there's no need for a vote. So on to the next item, which is open forum. And I know that, uh, council member Oras has a hard stop at 5:30. So we're going to lose her. And first public speaker is Tessa.
Oh, thank you. Well, it was very refreshing to hear Deb Davis, uh, my council member, say, we need to include the neighbors. We need to have the community involved and we're going to get everybody involved. And that's how we go forward is we get that community involved and we get public input about how we're going forward. And that is exactly what she did not do with our community, exactly what the council has not done with our neighborhood and exactly what the city hasn't done. That they have, they have decided that jobs are more important because they make more money. The city, the city coffers, the city pockets make more money from jobs and not the residents. And so we're saying it's not important housing. We, that's really what the city has been saying. Housing is not a crucial issue, though I appreciate what Matt Mayhem is saying. He says it is and he's right. And, and we're only, it's only going to get worse, the unhoused issue as climate refugees throng into our neighborhood. And so this is what we're having to do. And she is not doing it. She didn't do it with our hotel. She, it hasn't happened with the, the whole, the whole general plan of our community was not included about putting a hotel in our neighborhood. That was not decided by our community. And, and yet she says that's what needs to happen and it's truly what needs to happen. And everything needs to change because it didn't happen. We didn't include our neighborhood when you decided a general plan would take the commercial, would take any residential properties. Well, we were zoned residential to begin with. That's how my property, which was originally a bar, was turned into residential. And then the city came and said, no, all the properties that are commercial now stay commercial. And there was no discussion about it, even though Pierre Luigi says, when you buy a single family house, it should stay that way. Well, that might not be true, but at least the fact is that we are now giving it away to commercial. At least with the, um, the other, other divisions of, of housing is going for more.
Thank you, Sandra.
Uh, first, thank you very much for your time. I enjoyed listening to the discussion. I had a few thoughts I wanted to add for you. I worked for a Fortune five company and we did a lot of modular construction. And I recently saw a video where an 11-story apartment was built in 28 hours. 28 hours by using modular techniques. So I think we really need to explore that as a way to go forward on housing. Second, I would like to see you all help mobilize the community. The county is supposed to be the lead, is my understanding, on homelessness and on mental health. Help us by helping us mobilize to put pressure on our county to fully leverage their land, their resources, their income, their staff. I'm not sure that having the city manager and maybe some of your council people contact the county is going to be as successful as getting 1,000, 2,000, 5,000, 10,000 people contacting our county supervisors and putting pressure on them. Please help us mobilize. We want a solution. We want to work with you. We want to leverage all of the community and all of the agencies. That it can include the county. Make it, tell us how to put pressure on Porosei or whoever else to get Caltrans to work on this issue. Help us, help you solve the problem. Again, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to you energizing us as a community to solve our homeless problem.
Thank you, Blair.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for the meeting today. Uh, a reminder, I hope we can talk, continue to talk about, uh, good, open democratic practices that are positive and hopeful, uh, and good agenda items throughout this fall. I hope we can continue to talk about, uh, uh, new ideas, uh, how to talk about the vaccine process and how it can be safe and understandable and, and to be creative in, in other choices besides the vaccine, uh, if necessary. And explain exactly why, why is the vaccine, uh, of such good value for ourselves? That could be important goals for this fall. What else? Oh yeah, I have a real problem in speaking about renewable, uh, energy ideas and how important they are. We can work on this time and local procurement ideas at this time. If we do those two things, um, I think we'll be in much better shape if we have any upcoming natural disasters in the next decade. And we transition, we can then transition out of that difficult time period back to our, our, our bright, good future. It's not the other way around. It's not just waiting in misery by using continuously relying and using, uh, fossil fuels. We, we have to practice our good practices now, get them ready, get them in order and, and know what we're doing. And we'll just be so much better prepared after, uh, future disaster events. To conclude, uh, with, uh, council person Mayhem's words, uh, today, you know, I, I'm really, I've been talking all these months now about, uh, upcoming transitional housing subsidy programs. Those really tie into the, uh, uh, home first, key first, whatever, room first plans that, that sounds like the same sort of thing. That, you know, transitional housing is about to make an incredible change in our future, how we talk about it and how it can be helped into permanent housing. Um, I think we patiently have to wait for Mayhem's ideas. Thanks for the try though.
All right, Scott.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening, excuse me, Scott Largent. I, I actually enjoyed the meeting today. Normally I, I've been very frustrated with the council, so I have not really been attending. Sometimes I put the headphones on and listen at work, but, um, I, I just worry that everything falls on deaf ears. Kind of been around that, that, that track plenty of times. I, uh, I enjoyed what Matt had to say today. And I'm trying to figure out how to word this. Don't let them bully you into a corner, Matt. Their ways have not worked for a very, very long time. And I have a feeling some interesting articles will be written about this meeting. And I don't support any of you council members, but I actually support Matt now. And I like the direction that you're going. I like what you're doing, you're willing to have the conversation. And this is the biggest problem in Silicon Valley right now. You're taking it head on and I would just suggest, don't listen to these other muppets up on these panels. I'm telling you, their ways don't work. They've given up on the people on the streets, okay? Just like we're watching this massive disaster play out over here in this crash zone. We need true leadership, but we need new leadership. And it's not these old ways right now. I, I, I'm actually pretty upset at listening to some of you today. You know, Matt, it's, it's new eyes, a fresh perspective right now. And, and keep doing it, bud. You have my support. And if there's any of my research that I've done all these years, I'd be more than willing to sit down with you and help you succeed on this. Cause these other council members, they don't care. And it's obvious when you look out on the streets right now. It is obvious, the suffering that goes on right now in Silicon Valley and San Jose, i- i- it's shameful. And thank you, Matt, for pushing this forward and trying, just keep doing it, you're going.
Thank you, Scott. Todd?
Yes, uh, I, I thought the phrase elected leaders was, I thought it had some meaning, but it does not. We have elected followers in our city council. The only person I truly respect and follow today and listen to, and, and he makes so much sense is Matt Mayhem. The rest, I hope that, I, it looks like only two of you are on here now, but I hope the rest of the council members are listening to this, listening to our comments. You guys are shameful. There's a better way to do this. The definition of insanity, we always know, we've heard this cliche phrase millions of times, keep doing it what you've still been doing. So it's not working, guys and gals, it's not. You guys are caving into the NIMBYs. You're not doing what is right, what is just, what is humane. Stop doing, stop kicking the can down the road. Something has got to change. There needs to be leadership. I'm hoping if there's unhoused advocates out there, they're interested in making a, getting a coalition going. We need a coalition now more than ever because we need to stand up against these elected followers and find some candidates that will, that will do with the right, do the right thing. San Jose is, has the worst housing crisis. It, it's a disaster in the nation, shameful. You guys, your legacy is resting on your decisions today. Stop doing what you've been doing for all these decades, for all the time you've been in, in office yourselves. Thank goodness Matt Mayhem had the backbone to come up and say what is right and what needs to be done. We've got to stop doing what we've always been doing. Something drastically different is needed. Though the fairgrounds are a perfect opportunity for this. Right now, the fairgrounds are not being utilized. The worst utilization in the state for a fairground. Take, make, get leadership.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to, uh, this is my first meeting attending, actually my second. I did attend something else for some, uh, school. Uh, it's the first time that I stay all the way to the back because I'm personally very impacted by the decision for the fairground thing. I do not think that we need to resort to insulting anybody on the council. I think that everybody had come up with great ideas. I was entirely, I am still entirely opposing councilman Mayhem's, uh, proposal just because the way that it was worded, it was stayed in basically 6,000 people in my backyard. And this, obviously, when you see that picture, it actually calls your attention. And probably more work should have been put in making that a little bit clearer because what was explained.
Lisa, sorry for, for interrupting, but we already
Right.
debated that issue and you commented on, on that issue, um, open forum. I know they're new to the meetings, so.
Right. So, uh, just to appreciate, uh, everybody's, uh, cordial, uh, work. I think that Congress, um, Congressman, Councilman Mayhem gave a good explanation. And I do, I do, uh, support his point of the fact that something needs to be done and we cannot wait for too long. So we need to come up with aggressive and important measures that are going to address this issue on a large scale. And, um, And, um, the, my, my issue is the distribution, obviously. So I appreciate the, the explanation and I think that, uh, his point should be actually duly noted that, that we need to be more aggressive with this kind of measures. And I think that the conversation was cordial and, um, the comments, um, were impassioned. But I think it's important also to hear the community that lives in the area because they're impacted, their daily lives are actually impacted. And this is an issue that affects everybody. So everybody, thank you very much for, uh, for this discussion. And I've learned a lot, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, the person with the number ending in. Actually is cut off. Oh, six, nine, one, zero.
Um, while I still thoroughly disagree with anything that puts people together in a large scale or removes them from the neighborhoods that they live in. I do agree that we need to take like much bolder action and stop doing things that are like pilot programs and things like that. I don't support things that take longer than a couple of months. Because we've had almost a hundred and sixty people die out there this year. And that's almost our total death rate for last year. So we can't do things like that. We just can't keep, uh, talking about things and we can't keep saying, we're building something, wait, wait, wait. Because when we wait, people die. And speaking of dying, we've got all these elderly and disabled folks at the surest day that have lived there and they were put there because they were the most fragile people and put there during, when the pandemic started. And they've thrived. Their medical conditions are better, their mental health is better. And now we're putting them out because we created some other program that it's permanent affordable housing. Has anybody ever even heard of permanent affordable housing? No, it was just created there as a way to put these people out on the street. And that's not right. Somebody has to do something to save the people at the surest day. Because putting out these people who are protected and have thrived mentally and physically while at the surest day, it's ridiculous to put these people out on the street. Somebody needs to step in and save those folks and not force them out of that program when they could stay there if it was like permanent supportive housing and they pay thirty percent of their income rather than sixty-six percent under some completely made-up program that only applies to them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of our public comments, so this meeting is adjourned.